For the town of Acton, board and committees. Good evening. This open meeting of the Acton Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth and the local state of emergency declared by the Acton Board of Selectmen and Board of Health due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, the Board of Selectmen have suspended all public gatherings. And in accordance with the governor's order, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The governor's order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations and/or board committee votes of the meeting. Excuse me just a minute. Okay, let me see. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom app, as posted on the meeting agenda, town's website, calendar, identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that all the folks may be able to see you and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting materials. For DocuShare Agenda-supported meetings, all of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available in the Public DocuShare folder. And we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted by the chair unless otherwise noted. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. And before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Derek Chin, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda if applicable. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and states your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items of public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comments as follows. Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only after first being recognized by the chair. And will be afforded one or two minutes for their comment or question. Finally, each vote taken this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. And that is the end of the pre-AM. Why don't we take a roll call of who's present?
Okay.
John Capetta?
Yep, I'm here.
As a clerk?
Yep.
You call the roll?
Sure will. Uh, Derek?
Present?
Ray.
Ray Yakobi is present.
Nate?
I'm here.
And Sam?
Present.
And myself, John Capetta, is here as well.
Hey?
Thank you.
Uh, tonight, we have a rather packed schedule of new and special business. And before we start that, is there anyone in... Any citizen who wishes to bring up a subject that is not covered in the new and special business?
I do not see any hands.
Why don't we start with the new business? It's almost eight, 7:45.
What do you mean? We can't start the public hearing until 7:45. Do you want to take care of the minutes if we can do that? And we have four minutes before 7:45, we can take care of the minutes. If you want to, I mean, I'm just saying, we can't start the public hearing until the published time of 7:45.
Are we talking about the March 16, 2021 virtual Zoom meeting?
Yes.
Hey? Uh... Someone's got it in the screen. Thanks, Robert. Can you start scrolling down or up? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Uh, can I make a motion that we consider and approve the minutes from the March, I think it's the March 16th meeting of the Planning Board?
My second.
Go ahead, Derek. We have an official motion, I mean, a motion and a second, so now we can move to discussing.
Oh, okay. And the reason I say this is I had this marked up in... The two parts I want to look at. Yeah, I think this is the second, the first page, the second paragraph from the bottom. The applicant on the second line, the applicant stated that he will follow with the Acton Board of District in the next few days. Uh, I believe, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, that Barry Rosen sent something over this afternoon?
Correct.
The other thing I want to point out is on page two, uh, one, two, three, four, sections from the bottom, paragraphs from the bottom. The last page, my nitpicker, add an additional 159 square or something. I guess a square feet. Oh, it's already there. But if we corrected?
Yeah, it just ran out, it just ran out two different ways.
Down to the third page. And I see, I'm checking to see if it's corrected, yes. Here it is. The previous meeting minutes have been corrected. It used to be five dash zero dash one.
Yeah, I fix that this afternoon, I'll do it twice.
Anyone have comments on the meetings as? You know, it's, it's right there as shown on the screen, the draft?
I don't, uh, Mr. Chairman, I do not have any additional comments.
Me neither.
Me neither.
Who was that last person?
That was Sam.
That was Sam. Nate?
None for me.
Okay. I guess we can accept the meetings, I mean, the meeting minutes of March 16, 2021 as shown in the draft. Point of order, we need to do a roll call vote.
Okay. I can do that. Uh, so we'll start with Sam.
Uh, what's I?
Nate?
Yes.
And John Capetta says yes, uh, Ray?
Ray Yakobi votes I.
And Derek.
Eric Chin votes I.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
At 7:45.
7:45, now we can start the first item on your agenda.
Can I ask a question, actually, just, just for clarification? I noticed we have two public hearings scheduled for the same time. Is that an issue or do we have to take them in a particular order or not because of how they're publicized? I just noticed, I'm just...
That was done so that in case the... Originally, the, uh, originally, the zoning hearing has been scheduled for weeks at this time. But then we also wanted to keep it, the meeting flowing if, if somehow in the middle of the meeting, the 550 Pennant Road, it was continued, then you'd have this giant gap in the middle of the meeting between the zoning hearing and the, uh, this 23 Elm Street, so. That's for the board, I guess, Kristen, I would say the board, let the board decide? Or do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, as long as you don't start the meeting earlier than the time posted, um, it's fine, so we would recommend doing the zoning public hearing first um, and then moving forward with the, um, with the other two items.
Okay, fair, thank you.
Okay, it's 7:45 PM?
Fair enough, thank you, that's, that answered my...
About the public hearing on proposed zoning changes and proposed changes to the subdivision rules and regulations. A, proposed drive-up window zoning amendments. B, proposed amendments of subdivision rules and regulations. The floor is yours, Kristen.
Hi, good evening, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I thought it might be, um, easiest to start off with the rules and regulations, the subdivision rules and regulations, because it's a bit more simple. So, we have been working with the DPW Department and the Tree Warden um, and other entities in town to try to make the town's public shade tree policy a little bit more visible for applicants. And one of the ways we thought we could do that was by adding a one-line question on the application form for subdivision, um, applications, as well as other special permit applications for other permitting boards. So, the one change that we're proposing is in the subdivision rules and regulations, and it's on the application page. Um, we could actually pull it up right now, that would be helpful. Do you mind doing a screen share, Robert, for that? Um, and it's, it's just basically a checkmark. So, if there is an applicant in front of you looking to apply for a subdivision, they have to fill out this form. Um, and they would be required to check that box if they're the public shade tree or if they think there might be one. That way, it just kind of, again, highlights it to them, like, oh, looks like we need to take a look and see if there are any in contact with the Tree Warden. That way, we can stay ahead of the game rather than dealing with any potential public shade trees, um, later on in the process.
You bastard.
There you go.
There we go.
There it is.
So you can see, it's, it's pretty, it's a small, simple change, but we're hoping that it will, um, make a good impact.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Certainly.
And is that the sum total of the change?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Kristen, if I recall from reading the whole thing yesterday, there was one more issue that I thought... There was this question in two places and then there was something else. Uh, we see... Well, you know, you are more familiar with it than I am, so.
Just the cover page will also be updated to, the new, the new date.
To reflect the date that this modification was made, yeah, just to reflect how, what date the by, or the rules and regulations were last revised. So if you were to accept this, the first page would just be updated with the date, with today's date.
I think Sam might be referring to the fact that is this same line also in the proof plan or something like that?
Um, oh, okay, that's, yeah, that's probably what, for preliminary plans. Yes, it's the same question. So if someone decides to move forward with a preliminary plan first for a residential subdivision, they would, it would trigger that question as well. Um, if they move right to a definitive plan, they would have this here. Um, so, and then for commercial subdivisions, you're required to do a preliminary plan, so you would get the same question. Is that what you're getting at, Sam?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I misunderstood, but yes, there's, the same question appears on both, both sheets.
On the forms, yeah.
Yeah.
Um... Question, if that's the substance, is it appropriate to make a motion? So basically, the, well, I guess we should hear from the public if they have any comments on it, but...
Right.
If there's, that, if that's it, I'm ready to make a motion. Because I, I guess the intent, let me make sure we understand on both these changes in the subdivision rules are intended to be on the town warrant. So we're required to have a public hearing, which we're having tonight, and then the Planning Board has to then make a decision whether or not to uh, vote to put them on the warrant, is that, is, is that my correct on that?
This is not, this is not going to town warrant. This is only, the state, the state statutes requires a public hearing for the subdivision rules and regs. So this is, this is not going to town meeting.
Okay, but we still have to vote on it.
Correct, we still need to hold a public hearing for subdivision rules and regulations, but not for special permit rules and regulations.
No, on, on this one, as, as I understand it, it's okay. This is fairly straightforward, given our experiences in the last year when it came to public shade trees.
Correct.
Came in, uh-oh, afterward, created a whole set of issues. We're kind of saying, let's find out before we even start. That's kind of the intent for this, and there's the explicit question. Based on that, Mr. Chairman, it's okay, I would like to vote that we...
Can I also make a comment?
Absolutely. Before?
Yes. I, I absolutely agree with Kristen. This really is proactive. And had we had this before, we wouldn't have gone through all the stuff that we did with the 46 High Street proposal. Uh, so this is an excellent idea. Great.
Should we, shouldn't we hear from the public first before we take a vote?
We should. I think we should.
Robert, is there anyone?
Nope.
Nope? Okay.
Can I formalize my motion that we approve this change to the subdivision rules to add an explicit question about the existence of public shade trees?
My second.
I hear a second?
Check it.
Hey? So we take a vote, John?
Yep, okay. Uh, Sam?
Uh, Sam votes I.
Nate?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Myself, John Capetta, yes, and Derek.
Eric Chin votes yes.
Great, thank you, guys.
Next item, Kristen?
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, I thought now I can move into the zoning, um, public hearing piece. Um, did you want to formally open that, um, public hearing?
You are talking about the... Are you talking about A or B?
Um, the zoning public hearing for the drive-up windows.
Oh, you are talking about A?
Correct.
So... Uh, why don't we, uh, open the public hearing on proposed drive-up window zoning amendments? Do you have anything to sh, share on the screen?
Um, I do, did you want to do a quick roll call vote to open the public hearing?
You sure can do that. Um, Nate?
Present.
Myself, John Capetta, yes, present here, Ray?
Yes, present.
Sam?
Uh, yes, present.
And our chairman, Derek.
Derek, yes, present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to do a screen share and just to give a quick overview, I thought it would be helpful to, um, go through a little bit of the public process that the town took to really gauge the acting community's interest in expanding options for drive-up windows and then explain, um, town, you know, the planning department or planning division's, um, process in drafting that bylaw. And then I'm going to give a general overview of the proposed bylaw amendment um, that has been posted on DocuShare. And then I'll, I'll turn it back to you, um, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to do a screen share now. All right, just let me know when you can see that all right.
We can see it.
Okay, great. Um, so, last April, the Board of Selectmen um, tasked the Planning Division to conduct a public outreach effort to gather input and feedback from the acting community to see if the town should bring a drive-up window zoning amendment to the 2021 annual town meeting. Um, they had just been receiving lots of questions about drive-up windows and people asking if we could review that again. Um, so, the town hired Daphne Politis of Community Circle to assist planning staff with public outreach and facilitation. Um, we held the first public forum, um, in October, it was October 15th, and there were about 30 to 40, um, participants in attendance at the virtual workshop. And then the second public, uh, public forum was held in December, um, December 8th, and there were about the same amount of participants, um, in attendance. And after each public forum, we did a survey. Um, and the survey was released publicly to gather feedback from residents and business owners who weren't in attendance at the public forum or people who wanted to participate in that platform as well. So the same questions that were asked at the virtual public forum were also asked in the survey. That way, people had multiple different ways to provide feedback. And then, the process that we took to draft the bylaw, um, you know, we, we really looked back first at all of the public outreach and tried to kind of synthesize that. Um, and we compiled findings from the workshops and the surveys for the Board of, uh, for the Select Board and offered some general recommendations. And from there, we worked with both the Select Board and the Design Review Board to further, um, draft articles for voters' consideration at the 2021 annual town meeting. So, the zoning bylaw today currently allows for bank, uh, drive-up windows as an accessory use for banks in the office, business, and industrial zoning districts by right. There is no restriction to how many windows or lanes the drive-up window can have, and there are no design or site regulations. So just a little bit of context on, you know, what's, what's in the zoning bylaw today. So the zoning, uh, the proposed zoning article would basically expand options for drive-up windows. Um, it would allow for drive-up window facilities for restaurants and pharmacies in addition to banks. And it would also, um, allow those by right in the office, business, and industrial districts. The article also proposes, um, additional, or really new, uh, design and site regulations for all new facilities and limits one drive-up lane and one drive-up window for restaurants and pharmacies. There would be no limits for banks, as there are none today. Uh, but the article does require that drive-up windows for banks comply with the new design and site regulations. Um, design regulations would require drive-up windows um, to be integrated with and attached to the principal building. Um, and we also, you know, we got a lot of great feedback from the Design Review Board when, um, working on this article. So there are a lot of aspects in the design regulations that, um, you know, were really reflective of that feedback. Um, for example, um, parapets or canopies located over or, um, on any part of the drive-up window facility, it says, you know, should be made with a durable and weatherproof material consistent with the building material and style to which it's attached. Um, and that fabric and temporary awnings are not permitted. Uh, the drive-up window facility shall not be located along or within 10 feet of the front facade of a building. Um, and for corner lots, the front facade shall be considered any side of the building facing a street. That way, the drive-up window, um, facility is not right up um, at the front of the building when you see it, uh, the first thing when you're looking at a building. Uh, the location of the drive-up lane shall be part of and accessible from the parking lot and designed in a manner that is also, um, safe for pedestrians. Um, there are no additional curb cuts allowed for the purpose of accommodating, accommodating a drive-up window facility. And no signage shall be located on a drive-up window facility, um, parapet or canopy with the piece that maybe overhangs a window. Um, the other aspect that, um, we did consider and put in, yes?
Kristen, I think you may be up ahead of your, uh...
I think so. Sorry, I have a couple of screens going on here. Um, sorry about that. Um, so, the other aspect that, um, that we included was, um, really relating to, to signage. So, the zoning bylaw really addresses directional signs. So today, if you're out in, um, you know, Kelly's Corner or in another area of town, for TD Bank, example, for an example, there are small directory signs that say "drive up" with arrows. That's allowed today by right, they're very small signs. Um, but we didn't think that there were any additional signs that would need to be incorporated, except for possibly a menu sign for restaurants. So we did include that, um, as, uh, a proposal in the article that you're looking at tonight. And in addition to, um, those locations that, that I mentioned, um, new drive-up window facilities for banks, restaurants, and pharmacies in this proposed bylaw would also be allowed in Kelly's Corner and the Village Districts, but through a special permit process. Um, and would include additional site controls. So that's, that's a general overview. Um, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to, um, pull up the actual language of the article, um, if that would be helpful when kind of going through questions or comments from the public, we could do that.
Good idea.
Okay. Let me do a stop screen share there, and then... Let's see. Actually, Robert, do you have that screen up already? Oh, he's already, he's already on it, thank you. So, Mr. Chair, did you want to, um, entertain questions from the public or the board first?
Why don't we go with the board first? I see Ray Yakobi as a stand-up.
I do. Actually, that was going to be my first question. Um, is, is I understand this, I think it's important for both the board and the audience. This, since we've had this come up in prior years, um, this is not an attempt by the board in general to try to bring it up and take another bite at the apple. I think this has come to, to the board, actually to the Select Board, because there's been a very, very strong heightened request slash demand from the citizens. So I think, I want to make sure that we all understand this is coming from um, citizens in the town kind of questioning, why don't we have it, et cetera? I think we've explained, we try to do it before, circumstances have changed, et cetera. Um, my, I have a fairly specific question on, we're saying it's going to be by right, except in Kelly's Corner? And...
Uh, the, the proposed article is proposing, um, drive-up window facilities for banks, restaurants, and pharmacies by right in the office, um, well, so the office, business, and industrial districts, where those uses are allowed. And then in the Village Districts and in Kelly's Corner, it would be by special permit.
But, okay, fair, thank you, that, that, that's helpful. Um... I, I, my reaction is I think this is well thought out, I, I appreciate that. I think incorporating design review is important. I do think that it is something that the town does need. I do think that it is something that the town does need because my personal, strong personal feeling is. Someone might say, well, it was the pandemic and when the pandemic goes away, why do we need this? I think what's happening during the pandemic is gonna change things permanently, uh I think in a lot of ways. And this would add infrastructure to the town that I think makes sense. So I um. I wanted to thank the Planning Board and the Select Board for having done a very good job in terms of soliciting input. And understanding that and putting a what I consider what I've seen a good framework together. So thank you. Other than that, I have no questions.
I have a question. Sam, Mr. Chairman, uh I I was intrigued by one of the comments by Dean Charter. About the the drive up windows for restaurants uh ha- having multiple windows. Typically, when you go to a McDonald's or one of these fast food restaurants, they have multiple windows in a single lane. I didn't have a chance to go back and read the stuff to see if that was okay or not. Perhaps Robert or Kristen can can shed some light. It 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 would is that would that be allowed with what we are proposing here?
So in the proposed article, it only allows for one drive up window. And one drive up lane. So the basically, the process would have to be that you order at an intercom. And then you pick up your food at a window. Or you do all of your ordering and pick up at a window.
Kristen and Robert.
Typically, right now, you have you you have one place to order, one place to pay, and then one place to pick up your order. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I think it's the, I think what Sam's referring to, if I, most places like a McDonald's, there's an intercom where you order at. A window that you pay at and a window that you pick up. It is still a single lane, so it's still a single purpose. And I think if the end, I think the intent here is single purpose, we're talking about a logistical adjustment potentially, I think is what I mean. Sam raising is a potential change. That's what I'm hearing.
Okay, two windows, you're saying, okay.
Let me let me further say another idea that's that's been now a new trend. A lot of businesses, Dunkin' Donuts. Uh have been doing a lot of uh digital, you'll pay ahead time or you'll pay on the app. And so instead of, I know that that select board, uh Dean Charter, mentioned about uh changing gloves and stuff. But one of the big things now is 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 doing ordering things on your snap in your smartphone phone and then scan it in or or ordering ahead. So there's other ways that technology has changed where.
No, Robert, Robert, no, I beg you to fart. That's fine for a lot of young people. I know a lot of older people that still wouldn't be able to do that.
Thank you, Sam. I was just gonna make that very point.
Robert, do you do you have access to Dean Charter's uh email? And put it on the screen? So people understand what he's talking about?
Uh, Robert.
But he's.
Dean's comment, yes.
Dean's um email is as a private citizen. Okay.
Okay, and I uh my read of what Dean talked about is what Sam was just raising and it's not. I don't think it materially changes the intent of the by law. I think my read, and I agree with it. Is we don't want to have multi-lane um drive-throughs opening up, opening up all over town. And I think I saw a chat up, the problem we're solving is there's been a significant uptick in need and demand. For an ability to uh go to an establishment, order in or pick up without having to get out of your car. Curbside pickup has been shown to be not as effective or safe. So I think that's kind of the context. Uh I think Dean makes a good point that that so I'm just, I would, I want to concur with what Sam said. Um I mean, i- i- if we did make that change, and I'd like to hear from the public, it would not materially affect this by law at all, in my opinion. And I do want to, I uh Robert, with all due respect, I want to agree with Sam. I think we need to be careful. About saying, well, universally, people are gonna start using apps on phones. There's a significant portion of the population that does not necessarily feel comfortable with it. Um and I wouldn't want to assume that that's what we're gonna be using, even though a lot of us still do. It's an un- it's an unfair assumption, that's all I'm saying.
Sam, do you have any other comments?
Uh, no, then. That was it. Thank you.
Uh, John, do you have any comment?
Um, the thing I'm thinking about is the impact on traffic with the backups. If there's too many of them. I'm trying to, I I'm just, I mean, I I I agree with what Ray was just saying. I'm intrigued by what Sam just offered up. I'm just sort of thinking, what other issues come to mind? And I was just thinking of. Traffic? Blocking people from being able to, I I mean, I know that there already are drive-ups. I'm just trying to think out loud if there's. How that would be addressed in terms of. Potential for people getting not not being able to. I don't know. I'm not even sure if that's a question. I'm just thinking about. Traffic around this issue.
And what we wound up with is primarily what Kristen said, one drive up lane.
I heard that. I'm just saying.
One window.
But even but even a drive up lane can cause backups.
And John, if I may. If you actually look at most drive-ups across the country, that's very rare.
Okay.
And and I think the kind of uses, I think you're right. If we were in a super high-density area. That could potentially be a problem.
Yeah.
My read of the by law actually addresses that as part of the site review. But one of the things I like about this is saying, okay, we're gonna allow them. But we're gonna have an input as to where it is, how it's designed. And I think part of that process would address. Okay, yeah, we see a potential issue with traffic in this design. I I really don't personally think there's gonna be a, oh my god, the CVS at twenty seven and two A has a drive up. And the cars are now backed up into two A or twenty seven causing a backup. Uh I so I think I personally, I think I would be be probably addressed in the design. But you're correct. I think that is a question that will come up in town meeting because that's come up in the past.
Okay, that's a good, that's a good response to my thought. Thank you. I I I hear what you're saying. Thanks, Ray.
I have a question to ask uh Robert or Kristen. Previous attempts to have drive-throughs, yeah, in addition to bank drive-throughs. Or pharmacies and uh restaurants have failed. And we try to get more public input tonight. Or we know that, for instance, uh if we allow these uh. Drive up windows for pharmacies. I know that Acton Pharmacy several years ago, uh at the last attempt to have drive-throughs for pharmacies failed. And they, at that time, indicated that they did not have the resources to afford a drive-through. At present, they are uh they they. Uh. Offer. Home delivery free, it's my understanding. So if you have drive-throughs for CVS, that is two locations. All I can say is uh where we eventually are gonna put Acton Pharmacy out of business. Just wanna point that out.
Yeah, can I can I make a comment? This is Nate. Well, comments and questions.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Uh I agree with what you said, Derek. Um drive-throughs in pharmacies. Traditionally favor large chain facilities like the CVSs we have in town. And they push smaller mom and pops out of business. And they also make pharmaceutical care uns safer in general. As you have more points of access, you have, still have the same amount of phones ringing and customers to wait on in the store. It's just. Um, drive-throughs in pharmacies are not a good idea. And I know they are standards in other places, but. I'm curious as to how these two kind of business models were proposed. We're saying restaurants and pharmacies can have drive-throughs according to this amendment. When you guys were polling the town, were these the businesses that were singled out?
So that's a good question, Nathan. And Mr. Chair, can I respond?
Sure.
Okay, um so the Board of Selectmen, we're getting inquiries from um residents. And I think these were the two uses that were really the highest um on the list. Um in terms of people trying to avoid going into pharmacies when they're sick and getting medications. Um and then also same with restaurants with with COVID. So some of it came up because of COVID. Um some of it um in terms of the the, you know, initial inquiries. Um through the outreach that we conducted, we actually heard a lot of um. A lot of feedback in favor of both uses, um having drive up windows and those primarily just those two uses. Um in the past, there were, um I wanna say it was two citizens petitions that moved those particular uses forward. Um they failed the town meeting in the past. And again, that's the reason why I think the Selectmen really wanted us to take a robust. Um outreach effort procedure um in this case to make sure that, you know, really we're gauging the community's interest in something. And not moving forward with an effort that um would eas- easily fail at town meeting again and to see where the community was. Um so that's kind of, you know, the feedback that we got was was, yeah, it was about restaurants and pharmacies. There were a variety of reasons. Um you know, there were some people that expressed the need because they had um a certain, you know, a disability. That enabled them from going into a pharmacy easier for them. Um there were parents with kids, um with sick kids in the car. Um there's kind of a whole range of reasons um for both uses. But pharmacies was um pretty high on the, you know, wishing for a drive up window list.
Yeah. Um other businesses I've used in the past that have had drive-throughs have been, they used to live in North Carolina. And we had drive-through liquor stores and those were popular. Um some laundromats had drive-through drop-off. Um there's like a a ton of other businesses that could also have drive-throughs. Were there any interest in those?
Those didn't come up, no. Uh I think the drive up liquor one may have come up as a joke, but.
They're real. They're real that. Kristen, the the laundry did come up at the.
The laundry, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would add those two and takeout pharmacy if it were me. But what we're voting on tonight is whether or not to send this to town meeting, right? Not to approve these things, but whether to let people vote on them.
And I think I think what you're, yeah, the the Board of Selectmen could decide to move it forward. Um but the Planning Board um needs to vote to either recommend or not recommend the article.
Oh, I betcha.
Derek?
So. Ray a could be.
Um, yeah, I need, thank you. That I was in 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 a in a slight note of levity. I lived in Maryland and drive-through, it must be a southern thing, not 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 to stereotype. But drive-through liquor stores were real popular. I guarantee you that would never ever even get a majority of vote in this town. So it's it's, I it but you I do know what you're talking about. I I do want to kind of juxtapose a little bit. My concern is Acton Pharmacy has come up before. I think we need to be careful because I think there's a broad. I live in North Acton. And the the where where, and this is what I'm hearing from people, I need to go to the CVS in North Acton, not because it's a big box store. Because it's the one that's near me. So wh- while I I I appreciate Acton Pharmacy. I don't think having it personally, I don't think having a drive up window one way or the other is gonna keep them in business or put them out of business. I I think they fall into to the same category in general on smaller mom and pop businesses and the challenges they face. And that's my personal opinion. And this, I think, the reason it's come up again is we have had a fairly broad-based. Um. Number of citizens across the town saying, you know, I think some people weren't engaged and kind of woke up when the pandemic really hit. And said, how come we don't have this now that we really need it? So that's the context that I'm looking at. And yes, Nate, you're right. The the Board of Selectmen, even if we voted this down tonight, the Board of Selectmen could choose to move it forward to town. Because they have a, you know, they're elected and they might say, we still think this should go to town meeting and we would recommend. But the in on the warrant, it would say Planning Board recommended against. So I think it's our input tonight and we'll, we would vote and we'd say we'd like to see some changes and here's the sense of the Planning Board. But this is, you're right, this is not a final approval. This would have to go to town meeting and more importantly. Get a two-thirds majority. The last two times, if I recall correctly, Kristen, when this went to town meeting. A significant majority said yes, but it didn't meet the two-thirds threshold. It was not a question I, in my opinion of, oh, you know, there's a very small vocal minority wanting this. It's more a question, can we get or will town meeting vote two-thirds? But that's, I I'm done, Derek. Thank you.
Okay, uh any other questions from any of the members? If not, I would suggest that we look at some people who have sent in messages. Uh David Manlan, you asked a question. Can you have drive up windows in the Historic District Commission? The Historic District.
Mister uh Mr. Chair, would you like me to answer that one?
Sure.
Um so historic districts are not regulated in the zoning by law. So the zoning by law may allow for something, but the applicant, if there's somebody that wishes to pursue something in the zoning by law. Still has to abide by historic district regulations. And if there's something that requires historic district review. Um or approval, they would still have to go through that process.
Thank you. And David Manlan, you had a second question. I I couldn't remember what it was. I didn't write it down.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, can can I suggest that we open it up to the public and not just? Not that all the public doesn't necessarily see the chat. So I think we need to be careful about responding to individual chats. And we should actually put our hands and comment if if I s- I I I think that would be a fairer process. Because not everybody can see the chats.
Okay, and uh Robert, is there anyone raising their hand?
Yes, there is. I think first is Larry, who is introducing himself.
Me, I'll read first. Okay, I'm Larry Cana. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, uh before I ask my question, I want to go along with Sam and Ray. Uh I guess I'm another person in the same part of the population that is not a big fan of using apps to order a hand. And just walk in and magically magically pick up my stuff. So I'd I'd like to. Use the model that people are familiar with, unless they're the last twenty years anyway. Um my question is really educational on my part. All you people on the board and Kristen and Robert. All know what um businesses, industrial, and office districts are. And what Kelly's Corner and the Village Districts are. Can you give some example of what parts of the town fall into Village Districts? And what parts of the town are in the office, business, and industrial districts?
Absolutely. Mr. Chair, can I answer that one?
Yes.
Okay, so um the Village Districts in Acton are um the West Acton Village, which people are probably most familiar with. Um and then again, when you're thinking about the uses that are allowed um in terms of proposed restaurant. Uh drive up windows, uh pharmacies, um restaurants, you know, they're allowed by special. Um, restaurants, you know, they're allowed by special permit in. Oh, other village districts, so the East Acton Village District or East Acton Village Two, that's along Great Road. Um, if you're coming kind of from Concord, heading, um, heading north on Great Road or heading northwest on, on Great Road. Um, that's that first piece there where um Biggles Plus is, like that's East Acton Village area. Um, and then, um, the North Acton Village area is um. Closer to, um, let me think of a good.
Woods Plaza.
Yeah, I mean, near Narrow Park. Um, that would be a good, I, you know, there's really, I don't think we have any restaurants really up in that area.
No, it's mostly built, well, mostly.
Yeah, um, and then South Acton Village, so near the train station. Um, so those are the Village Districts in Acton, the Office Districts are OP One, Office Park One, Office Park Two. Um, our Business Districts include Kelly's Corner, so the Kelly's Corner, um, zoning district is a business district. Um, a limited business district. Um, is, you know, let me pull up here, um. If you're looking up in, um, maybe Park. Um, and the Powder Mill District, so in the Powder Mill corridor area, uh, where Stop and Shop is located. Um, and then Office Districts, um, you know, we've got the general and. I'm trying to think of giving you little locations, um, that make more sense to, rather than, you know, we have light industrials, small, small.
Listen, I, I, isn't all of this shown on the zoning map?
It is, yeah, I could do like a quick. Screen share if that's helpful. Going into the weeds, let me know.
No, I, I think, I think it's a fair question, and I, I, and I like to use what I call the rational man's rule. If you think, well, we have existing businesses in town where this might apply, they're in those districts already and they. This would allow them to consider adding them, I don't think all businesses are gonna run up and say we want drive through windows if it doesn't make any sense. This bylaw is nicely written because it has a design review, so if someone. Um, you know, says we wanna drive through and it just doesn't make any sense from a design standpoint, it's not gonna happen. So, uh, the, the thing that I like about this is it does have that govern, that check on it. So I thi- you, you think of, can, the way I would think, we know town, we know the businesses that we frequent. Okay, um, not your average jobs, okay? My personal feeling. They don't have the, they don't have the structure to have a drive through there. This would allow them to be considered, but there's no way that's gonna be designed for a drive through. So I, I think it's, um, Larry, for your, it, think about the businesses that we frequent. We're talking about banks, restaurants and pharmacies, so we know where they are now. Um, I don't know if we have any pharmacies in historic districts. And then. Okay, so then it becomes, they, those businesses could now consider putting in a drive through. To A, is it gonna make economic sense? And B, from our standpoint, does it make design sense? So I think, and then everything else, because I saw some questions saying, well, what about noise? Other issues would get addressed as part of the site planning process. Because we have a design review, like we review signs and lighting and all that kind of stuff. That would come up there, I think we need to think very clearly that this is a high level. Bylaw that says we are now going to allow drive throughs in other than banks. Specifically pharmacies and restaurants. This does not mean every restaurant's gonna put a drive through in, it may not make economic sense. It could be that curb, you know, pickup is working just fine for them, another one that comes to mind is Blackbird Cafe. They're not gonna put a drive through there, it, it just doesn't make any kind of sense, so I think. I just want people to kind of step back and understand, well, really, I think at the core, we're talking about. Should we allow additional uses for these two additional businesses? That's really what it comes down to, and I think, then the devil's in the details, it depends on where the business is. And the business might say it's not worth, it's not gonna work economically, I do believe it's gonna be primarily. Probably, I think that CVSs would definitely be the first in line, say we wanna do it because it's part of their business model. I think the restaurants is gonna be a case by case basis. And the ones that are already set up to go like McDonald's might wanna do, and then a two window thing is more logistical issue than anything else.
Ray, I think we've beaten this thing to death.
You're right.
It's taking up a lot of time.
Larry had another question in there, um, I think his question was, you know, where, we talk about those zoning districts, um. Where, you know, where are they located to kind of give some context, was there another question that Larry, that you, that you had? I don't know if you wanna raise your hand again if you had another question or if we. I see you there without your hand raised now, but.
It disappeared.
So I mean, there's, there's a lot of limited business district areas along Great Road, so you know, that's, we talked about that a little bit too. Um, so that would be where they would be allowed by right.
Yes, there is. Uh, Dean Char.
Dean, you're on.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, um, wanna thank you folks for, uh, for entertaining this request. Uh, it's been sort of a personal crusade for me. Uh, I was particularly moved by the letter that, uh, the email that you folks got. From the Commission on Disabilities. Uh, Franny Osmond sent it, speaking specifically about the challenges that. That folks, uh, who have mobility problems or they might have a disabled child and just. The, the complexities of trying to, you know. Get into specifically a pharmacy. Close friend of mine was undergoing cancer therapy. Um, she was immunocompromised plus she had another illness. She needed to pick up medication. All of her prescriptions were CVS and. They don't do the home delivery, so it was a situation where she was gonna end up having to walk through. The length of the pharmacy on Mass Ave in an immunocompromised situation in order to get her other medications. There's people like that that I think could really benefit. From having the drive up windows for pharmacies, um, and. Let's face it, um, you know, I see a lot of young faces on the screen right now, but. Uh, you know, twenty five percent of the population of Acton now is over sixty, um, none of us are getting any younger. And, uh, you know, all of us are gonna be having more and more mobility problems. Uh, whether you, whether you wanna get a coffee or whether you need to pick up your prescriptions. During the public hearing process. A gentleman that is, uh, just opened a new Dunkin' Donuts, uh, near the old digital complex in Maynard. Talked about the new Dunkin' Donuts he put in. I believe the number he said was eighty percent of his business was through that drive up window. So I think, you know, those kind of. You know, essentially fast food restaurants situations. They're gonna be beneficiaries of this if they've got the right location. His location, the, the building was built specifically to accommodate that sort of drive up. I just wanna second what Ray Acoby said. There's many locations that is just, it's not due to topography or the size of the site. You're not gonna be able to put a drive up window. Um, the existing McDonald's on Route Two Eight probably will never be able to accommodate a drive up window because of grade chain problems. Um, it's probably gonna be new flat sites that will allow this. I fully expect that, you know, if this thing passes. Five years from now, we'll probably see four or five drive up establishments in the town, we'll say what was the big deal. Um, so. The other item that I, I did send the email to you about the issue with having. Uh, with the drive up restaurant being able to have an ordering point, typically a kiosk, a pay point. And then a food pickup point, I think that's really important to be able to do that, so I think. You know. I don't wanna see multiple drive up lanes, but having one drive up lane with several functions. Properly socially distanced along the way, um. I think that's important just for the flow of the operation and certainly for sanitation. But in any case, um, thank you very much for, uh, for your consideration.
Thanks, Dean. Nate?
Yeah, is it, can I respond to that comment? Just first, thank you very much, Dean, for sharing that story about your friend on chemotherapy. Um. I think that people and patients like your friend are exactly the ones who need to be going into pharmacies. And having face to face relationships with their pharmacists, um. Chemotherapy is complex and there are lots of. Drug, drug interactions and things you wanna avoid and look out for when you're on those medications. And so it's especially those people who are on complex drug regimens who should not be using drive throughs. I understand she wants to, or people might want to avoid going into pharmacies, especially during covid, but. Malian is an option, most CVSs do deliver, I think there are other options than drive throughs, which must be. Safer and better.
For the benefit of, uh. Public. Who don't, who's know who Nathan is? Nathan, maybe you wanna. Say what you do for a living?
Sure, uh, I am an infectious disease clinical pharmacist at St. Vincent Hospital in Worcester. I work with doctors and nurses to make sure that their antimicrobial drug regimens are as safe and effective as possible.
Ray? Ray?
Yeah, yes, it struck me when Dean was talking. We actually have an example in town. The Wendy's is on the Acton Maynard border. Because it's on the Acton Maynard border, the drive through is on the Maynard side. The entrance to the restaurant is in Acton. They have a drive through. The drive through is. You order a kiosk. Uh, then go around, pay, and then you pick up. They don't have any backup issues, so I mean, that's been, that's been, that's been in town for years, I, I just struck me, it's like, oh yeah. We actually already have an example in town, it just happens to be straddling the town and because. One allows and one doesn't, it's, it's kind of an interesting. Proof case, for lack of a better term, of one that's functioning right now in our town. So the issues of backup and these other things, um. I don't, I, I have yet to hear anybody in town complaining about the issues at Wendy's. That's all, I just, when Dean was talking, it just kinda hit me upside, oh yeah, Wendy's, oh. The side that has the drive throughs in Maynard. So, this is, that's an interesting parent that I commented, that's all, but all seriousness. That, there's an example of, I think, what we're talking about. And there's one we can point to saying that's how it would work.
Okay, uh, Robert? Anyone else raised their hand?
Yes, there is, uh, Rona?
Rona? You're on.
Hi, um, I live in Acton, um, and, uh, my occupation is construction manager. For ten years I worked for McDonald's actually, and I permitted drive throughs throughout New England and all. I think seven different states in New England, and so I've had the conversation about drive throughs on a weekly basis for about a decade. So I'm really excited that you're considering adding them to this town, I don't go to drive throughs that often, but when I do, because I've got small children. I go to other towns and I give them my money because I don't wanna have to get out of the car and come in. Um, I had just a couple of points that I think you should consider, I think you should consider writing into the bylaws. Something about the volume on the speakers in drive throughs. Especially because this is a new thing coming into town, it's something if you buy a house in this actual McDonald's, okay, it's allowed. But if an existing business adds a drive through and it's adjacent to a residence, at nighttime in particular. If there is no restriction on the volume level, it could be, um, fairly obnoxious, actually, sound travels very easily at nighttime. And the volume on those speakers, as a resident, can really interfere with your quality of life, in my opinion. And I, I ran into that complaint over and over again, and I think it's fully valid. Um, the other thing I think you should think about is the idea of the dual lane. An average McDonald's has seventy percent of their customers come through the drive through, and one of the biggest problems they had was. The parent who pulled up to the drive through lane and then turned to their five kids in the back of the car and said, okay, honey, what do you want? And they take eight minutes to order, while the guy behind them just wants a coffee. The big benefit of allowing two menu boards and the two lanes that then merge into one to pay and pick up. Is that you don't get a backup of cars out into the street, you get those backups. Because people don't think about what they wanna order before they get up to the menu board, and it happens over and over again with large orders. The next guy just wants coffee, the next guy just wants a hamburger, when you allow two order points, two menu boards, you allow. Those customers to sort of keep flowing through essentially, and you stop the backups off into the street. I know it kind of seems like it's successive and, and two order points aren't needed and it's additional signage, but in my experience, they are very, very successful. At keeping the people from going and stopping cars backing out into the road. Uh, I know of multiple towns where Starbucks have had to employ policemen. In the last year during the pandemic to monitor traffic as it backed out into the road and caused trouble. There's an example of this in Burlington near the mall where the Starbucks there regularly has a line going down the road. I, if you allow the two points, it certainly helps that flow to go to being restricted to one. One of those issues. Um, that's all I have to say.
Mister Chair, I have a question for, uh, Rona, if she has a, a moment.
Yep.
Um, do you have, um, a suggestion on speaker volume, or do you have information you could share with us based on your past experience?
You know, I don't know the volume off the top of my head, but I'm happy to get it from the engineer I used to work with and I'll pass it to you in the next day.
I thank you very much.
Derek, you're muted. Say again. I forgot what I was saying.
Rona, if you're still there, do you know how to email Kristen Gushar? No, she's gone.
Um, so I will, um, let's see if I see you on here still, um. Our email is on the website, so, um, hopefully we'll, we'll connect.
Okay. Robert? Yep, next person?
Uh, it just says Eric, who is introducing himself?
Eric, you're on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can, yeah.
There seems to be more than one person there. Eric? Uh, your volume is very low.
Very, very faint.
Can't hear you, Eric.
That's why we're going to move on to the next person, Mister Chairman?
Yep.
Yep, it says caller ID, uh, they have to, please introduce yourself.
Hi, it's Tara from West Acton, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, yes, okay, so I agree with Nate, um, and that's what Sod from, uh, West Acton Pharmacy, the Acton Pharmacy. Was saying about relationships, they walk out to the cars, um, it's a more personal interaction than a window with people waiting behind. Um, and if CVS gets a window, that's what, well, they'll encourage people to use the drive through with someone who isn't a pharmacist. Um, I object to the two lane idea, uh, looking at the two lane travesty as far as I'm concerned, at the TD Bank in. Middle of Kelly's Corner, we've gotta stop encouraging car use, um, I respect that people think it's convenient, I just don't think it's. It's healthy or good.
Thank you.
Also, do you wanna announce the, uh, Twenty Two Elm Street to take forty five or?
I think we're gonna do, uh, take things in the order that.
Oh, right, sorry, okay, thanks so much.
Robert?
Let's try, um, Eric Wagner again.
Now, can you hear me this thing?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, I, I called it on my phone, uh, actually, the previous caller, uh, Rona Murray actually hired me for my. Okay, I I called it on my phone. Uh actually, the previous caller, uh Rona Murray, actually hired me for my position. I'm actually a McDonald's employee. She actually um left the company about two weeks after I had joined. I was actually gonna say the same things that she had said, so thank you very much, Rona, for uh pointing out the details. About the double drive-through lane. Um it's a great benefit to McDonald's. I know a lot of people think it may not be. But it really tremendously helps the throughput of our uh car capacity on our sites. That prevents the issue that John had mentioned about traffic backing up onto the street. Uh you know, one of the recommendations that I would have to the town would be setting a minimum of distance from the drive-through. Menu board back to the street. You know, maybe you set that at four to six cars in length. And that will help you prevent having those issues of traffic backing up. But giving us the ability to add a second drive-through menu board. You know, almost doubles the amount of customers that we can get through to prevent that from happening of cars backing up. Um the other thing that I wanted to mention that was touched on was the three um points on the building. Um so after you go through the drive-through lane and you place your order, the pay window, the pickup window. And then the long lead time into window. That also helps us tremendously as well, cause it's um it's a great. Uh safety aspect for the company that employees aren't working uh walking outside, crossing the drive-through lane. Uh and at nighttime, it's just, it's a huge savings for us for for safety for employees. And it also helps creates that efficiency of keeping our drive-through lane um, you know, working faster. So some of the, some of those additions that you had talked about, I think they're all great benefits. And if there's additional information that McDonald's can share, I'd be glad to share that with you. I know Rona talked about the uh speaker. Um you know, the noise. Uh we can provide the details that we use for Ospex, and you can use that as a standard if you chose. But I'd be happy to share any information if you guys are interested.
Hey, thanks, Eric. Robert, anyone else?
That's, that's all for now.
Uh Mister Chairman?
Yes.
As long, one, one possible suggestion, given what I'm, what I've heard. Is um rather than having it be binary, you know, okay, it's 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 one or that's it. Is have the the single lane drive-through by right. But we would consider dual by special permit only. In cases where it could make sense, then they could present their case, but it would be under a special permit. And that's kind of what, based on what Rona and this gentleman just said, it could be, there could be sites where it would make sense and and could be considered. But I would not make that by right. I I like the by right being a single lane. No two-lanes and just being arbitrary. So we might wanna, as I'm just saying that to the board, I'm thinking out loud. We might wanna consider something like that, that or making a recommendation to the, to the planning department and the select board to think about adding that in that way. Given what we're hearing, I'm just kinda seeing, does it make sense to factor it into what we're thinking about?
Kristen, don't we, uh doesn't your proposal say? Any uh drive-through, even if it's single lane, is, needs a special permit?
So the proposed amendment requires a special permit in the village districts and the Kelly's Corner zoning districts. But would allow, it's proposed right now to be by right in the office, business and industrial districts. Um and so you know, I think Larry Cana has his hand up. I think he put it up just as we said we didn't see anyone, so I think we were like a second delay.
Rona just came back. Guess not.
Uh would you like to uh us to let Larry speak? I think he um has his hand up.
Uh we're gonna wrap this up soon, otherwise it'll be here after midnight. Larry? Is it Larry Cana? Or was it Larry something, Larry Beal?
Button, the ugly button finally popped up. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I I make this comment with great trepidation after Nate gave his credentials. Uh but. Yeah, it's a really good idea if customers at pharmacies talk to the pharmacist about questions. But is it the zoning board's job? Or any other committee's job in the town? Uh to regulate behavior like this. I mean, this this woman doesn't wanna go into uh. CVS with all of the conditions that she's got, uh skipping all of having to walk in there and all of that. Um and a drive-through is something that would be a great benefit for her. Do we wanna say, no, we're not gonna provide this benefit to the entire town because we think that. Uh some patients really need to look for pharmacist. Um let me stop now.
Hey, thank you. Robert, anyone else?
Nobody else, anybody else? Nope.
There's no one else?
I have a question. Kristen, do, does the board need to vote on this tonight?
So you could decide to vote on it tonight to recommend or not recommend. Um or you could um, you have a meeting on the twentieth, that's next, next week. Um so you could postpone your vote to next week as well.
Derek, if I could, I would recommend that we postpone our vote until then. So we can have a little bit more of a discussion as a board, giving input that we got. Cause I think we've heard some very valuable input and I think some very valuable exchanges. That before I vote, I might wanna make a motion, but actually incorporate some recommendations of changes based on the input. I don't think we have enough time to formulate an intelligent change right now. So I I would prefer that we. Because we have other business tonight, to continue this to our next meeting. And then we can say.
Do you want your, had your hand up?
I did, thanks, Derek. Um I completely agree with Ray. I would like more time. And since we're meeting next Tuesday, I would suggest that as well.
Uh I agree. I I voted.
Voted. Nate, can you make next week?
Yes, definitely. Let's put this till next week. And I would encourage everyone who's listening to talk to their pharmacist about how they feel about drive-throughs.
Hey, alright, shall we take a vote on it? Oh, we don't need a vote on this.
Do you want me to do roll call?
No, no, we're postponing this till, we're getting to continue it.
You can make a, make a motion to continue our discussion and keep the public hearing open until our next meeting.
Is that the motion? I'll second that.
Ray, can you make a motion and continue it?
I did. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought I did. To continue the public hearing until our next meeting. Uh at that point, we can have further discussion and take a a more formal, informed vote to the Board of Select. Sorry, uh Select Board.
Second.
Hey, are we done with this? Are we done with A?
Did you roll call?
I'll do the roll call now. Sam?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Myself, John Capetta votes to wait till next week. Yes, Ray?
I.
And Chairman Derek?
Yes.
Thank you.
Kristen, do, Kristen, do we need a timer for that or are we okay continuing in for next meeting?
I think you could start, uh you could say the the seven-thirty time, um.
What's that, some, you mean seven forty-five?
If it's, yeah, seven forty-five.
Shall we proceed with B? Kristen?
So I think we've, we've done the subdivision rules and regulations, so um Mister Chair, I think you could move forward with the next public hearing.
Okay. The next public hearing, which was supposed to be part of seven forty-five. Is PB twenty-one dash one, Continued Public Hearing. Round Mountain Solar Photo Photovoltaic Installation. Special Permit Fifty Independence Row. Let's see. Who is making this presentation? Is it you, Brian? Or Larry?
Um Mister Chairman, I'm prepared to um speak. And if it's helpful, maybe I could recap how we left the last hearing and the work that we've done since then. Does that make sense?
Yep, but first, tell people who you are.
Okay, uh so my name is Larry Beals. I'm with Beals Associates. And uh we are the uh planners and engineers who have designed. The proposed facility to be located at the WR Grace Facility. Uh also on the screen that I can see is Brian Koppl. Brian is with um Renewable Energy Massachusetts and is uh one of the developers of the property. Participating with us also is Matt Costa, who is one of the design engineers from my office. And I believe um working with Brian tonight are representatives uh from Syncarfa. So um if we get into the discussion, we can uh perhaps get them access to this. But for the time being, Brian and I uh will probably talk to the issues.
And Mister Chair, uh I apologize for, but again, but did you wanna do a roll call vote to open the public hearing? The continued public hearing um before Mister Beals gets into the discussion?
Yes.
Sure. Okay, uh Ray?
I think we had, don't we have to have a motion before we? Motion that we open the public hearing, the public hearing on PB twenty-one dash one, which is a continuation.
Second, fine, okay, I'll do the roll call now. Uh Ray?
I.
John Capetta's I. Nate?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
And Derek?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so uh when we left the last hearing, um we kept, I think the decision was to keep the hearing open. Because um there was an unresolved issue involved involving the uh. Uh fire protection. And um to refresh your memories, when we made the application, uh Chief Hart had made a comment that. He would like to have the water main extended from an existing hydrant to a distance of approximately one hundred feet. From the gate to the solar facility. That was a reasonable request in our view. Um so we agreed to it. And uh then we came to the hearing and there was testimony at that hearing that the uh existing hydrant. Uh was not functional on the property. And so um following that hearing, I contacted the Acton Water District. And the district confirmed that uh that's not the town's uh hydrant. There is no main from the town connecting to that hydrant. And um what we have been able to ascertain is, I believe it was a hydrant installed. Perhaps by WR Grace many years ago, and it was connected to a well on the property for fire protection. Um it it's been decommissioned for the obvious reasons, uh groundwater. Uh it was a groundwater well that supported the hydrant and uh. They no longer wanted to withdraw the contaminated groundwater from the site. So uh that was not an option. Uh I talked with the water department, we did some research, and we found that there. Uh the closest mains to the site um are not accessible for us. There's one main located on the north side of the railroad tracks. There's an industrial building about due north of our property. And in order to connect to that main, we would have to uh excavate a line through our site to the rail track. Uh we would have to jack a pipe under the rail. Uh and then continue across private property to hopefully access that main. Um all of those factors, uh it it's a tremendous expense. Uh I I don't even know if it's feasible or possible to get permission from the MBTA. To actually uh jack a uh water pipe under its uh track system. For good reason, the MBTA is very protective of the rail system and anything that potentially uh disturbs it is uh discouraged. Um so we cross that off our list. I I believe there is a um. Water main located approximately at High and Parker. Um it's a, I I think it's approximately twenty-four hundred feet away. Uh and quick rule of thumb measurements indicate that that's potentially about a three hundred thousand dollar expense to. Um bring the main up to the site and it would involve considerable excavation on the site, which is not encouraged. And then there's a another main, a private main down in uh Knox Trail, which um. Uh i- is private, we have to gain access to that, and then we'd have to get Eastman's across uh private property. So there, there's nothing re- reason, you know, within our reach to use. So I talked to the chief. And um a- as I mentioned last time, I've learned to respect fire. Uh fighters uh wishes. They're important. They protect public safety. So we uh wrestled with a lot of different alternatives. We thought, well, perhaps. Uh we could install a pump on sinking pond. And uh that's a pretty good, it's a large body of water. It's a pretty good potential source of water. Um I discussed it with Grace and they, both WR Grace and the EPA would be concerned. Because at one point, sinking pond was contaminated. Uh there is a concern that sediments remain contaminated. And placing a pump with an intake into that pond has the potential to draw out contaminated sediments. And would be spraying them across the site that's just been cleaned up. So it would be um uh it would be a rigorous process to go through to to get approval. And we might not even get approval for that. So um what we discussed with the chief, and he seems to be amenable to, is that. Uh our our cost to extend the hydrant to the site. Um be- before we agreed to it, we ran a cost estimate on it. We determined that it was gonna represent a cost of about forty thousand dollars. Uh to make that extension. And we thought that was a fair uh cost to uh incur for the project and we agreed to it. Um discovering that the hydrant is inactive, uh that gave us plus forty thousand dollars. And that we had already budgeted. So I suggested to the chief that. Uh it would seem a a good idea for me if we allocated that money to your purposes, for whatever you determine your purposes to be. If it's uh to gain training, if it's to buy equipment for help you uh fight remote fires. You know, the person best equipped to make the decision on how to spend that money is the fire chief. So um Syncarfa at this point has at least agreed to um provide of of uh. An amount of forty thousand dollars to the fire department to assist in their, in the department's firefighting efforts. Uh uh and and I've had communications with the chief. He thinks that, he believes that's acceptable. Um the staff can weigh in on that and um verify whether he agrees with that or not. Um the second uh issue that came up subsequent to the meeting was. The concern that uh the fire suppression systems, while we have agreed that they will be PFAS-free. There are other constituents within the fire pers- fire suppression chemicals. Um that can be uh toxic in 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 large doses. It it's a, it bites, the chemicals fight the fire very effectively, but uh there are residual uh chemicals that remain.
And Larry, man, Larry, sorry. Can I interrupt you just, just to confirm again, that's the fire suppression system within the sealed enclosed battery storage unit? I just wanted to be clear about that, as opposed to out in the open uh panel area.
Yes.
Argues. I just thought that was important for the board to focus on that, to state.
It is. So um and we agree. And uh we thought we had addressed it because we have a condition that talks about. Uh emergency response plans. Um and w- one of the conditions uh reads that. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit and obtain from the Town of Acton. Department of Health, an approved hazardous waste cleanup and disposal plan that will contain. The plan of action should the fire suppression system be discharged. So um knowing that there's heightened concern about the chemicals in the fire suppression system within the battery containers. Uh we expanded that, or we're recommending to the board, an expanded condition that would add on to that previous statement that I read. The hazardous waste cleanup and disposal plan. The hazardous waste cleanup and disposal plan shall include spill prevention, comma containment, comma, and cleanup procedures in the event that the fire suppression system discharges in a fire event. So what we're trying to do is say, okay, we've got an emergency response plan, but let's be very specific that it's going to have to prevent spill prevention. It's going to have to contain it, and then it's going to have to spell out what the cleanup procedure that system's activated. So um, we were comfortable the way it was written initially, but if we need to clarify it with that additional language, we're happy to do that because that's the intent of um, the operations. And then there was uh, one other uh, condition that the owner of the solar facility shall work with the Town of Acton Fire Chief and other appropriate emergency personnel to develop a satisfactory emergency response plan prior to the final building permit approval. Once the construction of the fil- facility is complete and prior to the commencement of operations, the owner shall perform a comprehensive orientation at the facility with the appropriate emergency personnel to discuss the design and operation of the facility and to review the emergency response plan at the facility. Uh, again, we thought that was adequate. The issue was raised, so we're suggesting greater clarity and that we add to the end of that condition one more sentence that sends, says the emergency response plan shall include spill prevention, comma containment, comma, and cleanup procedures in the event that the fire suppression system discharges in a fire event. So it, it's, it's a little bit of belt and suspenders, but I understand the issues are serious and, and we may as well be as crystal clear as we possibly can be on that. Um, and then um, we recently read a email correspondence from Barry Rosen um, where he raids, raises the issue of um HFC, hydro, hydrofluorocarbons uh, that are also used in um, fire suppression systems. So I'm not inclined to read this additional condition unless you want me to. But we submitted a, a condition to uh, Robert and Kristen this afternoon that uh, if, if I could summarize it, says that uh, first of all, we need to put in a system that complies with building code and fire code, so um, we can't agree to something that um uh, doesn't comply with, with code requirements. And, and it, I'll, I'll just read this to it so I don't leave anything out. Uh, and it, it pertains to, again, this, the containers that include the battery system, so it's an enclosed container. Within that are all the batteries. And then uh, it also includes uh, the fire suppression system, which uh, we've agreed to make uh, PFAS free. We've agreed to uh, contain any uh, discharge of the fire suppression system. And then this uh, condition will address the content of the fire suppression uh, chemicals. And it states that the battery storage system's fire suppression system will comply with all local, state, and federal regulations. So we want to be clear that there are uh, code requirements that supersede planning board uh, conditions. So you cannot allow, you cannot grant us a condition that allows us not to comply with uh, code requirements. Assuming everybody knows that. So then the condition, condition goes on, as a condition of this special permit, prior to closing out the building permit, the owner shall make a good faith effort to explore with utility scale battery storage vendors whether they can deliver effective HFC free, that's a hydrofluorocarbon free, fire suppression system. Provided such alternatives are equally effective, provide adequate fire suppression capacity, and are economically reasonable to procure. And B, as evidenced by the foregoing requirement, required efforts, the owner shall provide to the building inspector prior to closing out the building permit either one, a spec sheet or other correspondence from the chosen vendor confirming that the battery storage system uses the HFC free fire suppression systems, or two, correspondence from a competing battery storage vendor providing their explanation of their inability to deliver a battery system with HFC free fire suppression components. So uh, it, it's a fancy way of saying that we'll use our best efforts to use HFC, but if for some reason the code or vendors or products are not available, then um, w- we're just going to have to use the best possible system we can. But we're gonna, we have a plan in place to contain it should it discharge. Yeah, I can tell by the blank stares, I've just gone through a lot of detailed information. And I hope I haven't bored you, but I've done my best to try to explain it.
Larry, I'm glad this is Derek Chen. I'm glad that you explained what HFC meant because uh, Barry Rosen's uh, email didn't define it.
I, I noticed that. So I, I, I looked it up just so I was clear on exactly what he was discussing.
Thank you.
Question, is the uh, eight foot by forty foot uh, intermodal uh walks, if you want to call it, is that airtight? Or can, when, if should the fire suppression system goes off, any of toxic fumes will come out of here?
Brian, do you know the answer to that? Or?
I don't know personally, but I know uh, uh, everything that we've heard from Sincarfa, who are the the folks who've procured these systems, is that they're sealed systems. And so my understanding is that they are airtight. Obviously, if you open them up, that goes away, but uh, the fire suppression system is a gas-fired fire suppression, puts out the fire if ever there were one. Um, and it's a sealed environment, which, you know, also stands to reason in terms of drawing oxygen for a fire, I would imagine it would be sealed.
Questions from the members of the board? Ray?
I- if I can be kind of succinct, I, I, and Larry, I, I appreciate your rather detailed answers, but um, for my simplistic mind, I think there were the three issues. Okay. If I understand the first one about connecting to a hydrant, what I'm hearing you say, that's not feasible in any event. Apparently, it doesn't predict, it doesn't um, involve any public safety issue if we don't connect. And furthermore, because you're going to spend forty thousand dollars to do a connection, you're now going to make a donation to the fire department to use that money as they see fit. Is that, is that a fair assessment of what I heard? So we're not going to hook up, it doesn't present a public safety issue. And I guess is a just, a goodwill gesture, you're saying we allocated forty thousand dollars, you're going to give that to the fire department? Is that, is that right?
It's, that, that is fair and that's correct, yes.
Okay. And then on the other issue, the, the sealed container, the issue, and the PFAS and all, all the other um, acronyms that we were throwing around, had to do with these sealed containers. You've added some conditions to add some clarity, if I understand correctly. Um, it sounds like the water district's not going to raise their hand and say, timeout, that's not what I was talking about, and you don't have an inappropriate condition. Is, is that a fair way of looking at that portion?
Uh, yes, it is.
I want to make sure we're really honing on just the two issues, where there's hydrant and conditions that satisfy the water district.
Yes.
I think that's what we're, it boils down to, it sounds like to me the fire hydrant has been resolved, maybe not in the way we originally intended, and we were going to be maybe ha- attaching to a hydrant was from a public safety standpoint overkill or not necessary, given the facility. That's kind of my words, okay? So the chief and you agree, okay, we're going to do this. You can use it as you see fit as a town for the fire department.
Yes.
Unless Barry raises his hands, the conditions are all set on the issue of the fire suppression systems. Vis a vis the water department. Is that? Do I hear that?
And just to rewind a bit, the, the original concern by the water department was PFAS.
Right, exactly, I understand.
So we resolved that last time with the certificate saying all of the panels and everything on the site is PFAS free. So these are somewhat new issues and, and they're valid issues, and so we've drafted conditions to say that this is how we suggest we should perhaps deal with those issues.
Here's a question for Kristen and Robert. Given that, I guess the language that Larry just talked about, you received today, if you had a chance to review that and or incorporate it into a potential decision?
So the fire department comments, um, we spoke with the fire chief this morning um, to confirm what Larry provided um, in his discussion today. So um, that we did, we did resolve. Um, the comment came in a little bit late from um, from Larry, so I'm going to defer to Robert because he was in um, at that point.
It did not make it to the decision.
Okay.
Just because you don't want, I don't want to keep posting new decisions back and forth and you know, we, we posted one decision in the, in the afternoon and and kept it one decision, just so there's no confusion of, what is this, is this for vision two, vision three? Just so there's no, all these decisions, you know, floating around.
The question I would have then, is it, is it is it fundamentally material, or are we now getting into overkill and trying to figure out how many angels can dance on a pinhead?
Yeah.
No, I was trying to get, I mean, I mean, it sounds like to me the things have been resolved. And we have absolute stuff.
I think it would, like you said, it would be good to um, you know, Barry is here. I think he's the one that made the comments. Um, they're, they're quite technical. Um, and they're not really in Robert and I's expertise to comment on.
That would be great. I just want to, I want to cut to the chase quickly. That's all I'm saying, and I want to make sure we're identi- I'm just I'm trying to hone in. So we've got the hydrant thing, in my opinion, good, okay. If Mr. Rosen is available to comment, I think, I, I know Mr. Chairman is okay with you. I'd like to hear from him because then we can say, you know, I, I'm kind of lost too, so I'd like to hear Mr. Rosen say, oh no, I disagree, or I agree, and I don't want to get into a he said, she said later. You're, you're, you're muted, Derek.
Barry Rosen, are you present?
His name's on the screen.
Oh, Barry?
I am here. How to get on?
Ray?
Yeah, he is.
We can hear you. We're on.
Without getting into the weeds. HFCs have been around a long time. They've been used for fire suppression in lots of different situations, particularly when there's computer equipment, electrical equipment. And the reason that they're used so much is they uh, while they do have side effects, they're, they're not healthy things for people. Uh, they can put out a fire and they most of the time do not damage electrical equipment. They are being replaced and they are being phased out. They're being phased out by law. The EPA uh, had been sued numerous times about it. They were relaxed a lot during the Trump administration. Uh, they were sued and uh, the suit actually eventually got the EPA essentially had to reverse itself. Uh, because, well, we don't go into the politics of it. But uh, a state of Massachusetts was part of lawsuit as well as New York, seventeen states, I think, were involved. Uh, the trend is to get away from them. Why? Because HFCs are one of the most damaging chemicals to the environment. They've been known to be damaging, but they were no suitable sub- no good suitable substitutes. Where do you see HFCs? You not only see it in fire suppression equipment, but they were, they were uh, the freon in your old fashioned air conditioning systems were HFCs. That's what freon is. It is an HFC hydrofluorocarbons. Very old chemicals. Uh, the new air conditioning systems for the most part don't have it. In fact, in some states you can't sell it already. The law that was just passed, interestingly, by the outgoing Congress says that they have to be reduced by eighty-five percent. And they will do that over some phase of time. Uh, Massachusetts, well, you saw the three states. Massachusetts is looking to reduce it even more quickly. My guess is the federal government under the Biden administration will probably step it up. But they have the authority to do it. Again, not going into the weeds, they're just very harmful chemicals, period. They're not good for humans, they're not good for the environment. They have the highest degree of global warming of almost all chemicals. That's why they are being replaced. It's not because businesses wanted to replace them. There are many, not just one, there are many suitable substitutes. They fit into the same space. They are all approved, virtually in every state they're approved. They do the same thing, but they have virtually zero global warming. They're not poisonous, they're not harmful for humans. There's no cleanup required because they totally evaporate. In fact, the example that you'll get by speaking to one of these companies, uh, well, if you speak to the 3M salesperson, what they'll tell you is, you can take a pa- take a paperback book, soak it in the chemical, take it out, and you'll be able to read the book in about a minute. They totally evaporate. They do not harm a lot of the old, what they used to call Halon, uh, that's a brand. Uh, which were chemicals, HFC chemicals that were used in computer rooms. Uh, and, and that's where I saw experience because I worked in a place that had substantial number of computer rooms. Uh, replaced systems. Uh, Halon was taken out because they, they, they just weren't healthy systems. And they replaced it, almost plug-to-plug compatible. The age it was changed, sensors are changed, and they're replaced with different systems. Uh, Novak twelve-fifties is one brand, but they're replaced with these other chemicals. It's a group of chemicals that are called ketones versus HFCs. And they can't be replaced. And, and that's the bottom line.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Rosen? I, I, I appreciate the science.
Sure, Ray.
I appreciate the science lesson at a practical level. What do we talk? Now, I hear two things. One, there may or may not be something on the market for the particular systems we're trying to use, as opposed to whether it's feasible over time to have those systems in. So I'm just trying to
They're already being installed, right? They've been installed for years. And not, something came out yesterday, that being installed will ever primarily where there's electronics involved because they have the capability, which is what Sincarfa would be, well, actually, Larry Beals, I've been all been concerned, you don't want to damage the batter- looking at my batteries, and it's, are fairly expensive batteries. You don't want to damage them. You could use a water system, but you're going to wipe out the batteries. So you want to use a chemical system. Same sort of system as you would use in a computer room, you don't want to damage your electronics. And so just Novak twelve-fifties is one of many brands that are available. Same system, they're gashes, well, they're stored as a liquid, but when they're deployed, they're deployed as a gas. And usually use some other inert propellant in the fact of the system that uh, Novak uh, system happens to use nitrogen. The system that was being proposed, uh, the uh, the, the two-hundred system that they were proposing uh, also uses nitrogen gas to propel the suppressant. Essentially the same thing. They're both gashes systems. One, there is no cleanup.
Okay, so Larry? Can, can you, I, I just, my head's hurting to be honest with you. Are the issues consistent with that or not? I'm just, just, I hear what Barry's saying. I heard what you said. Are you guys saying the same thing or not?
I, I believe we are. Um, we're saying that um, subject to, i- if we can find an uh, HFC free fire suppression system that does the job that complies with code, then uh, we will, we will employ that system. Uh, but if for whatever reason it's not commercially available, or, or it's, it costs more than the whole installation put together, uh, you know, we uh, would like the ability not to have to use it, but uh, but, but what we said is that the owners will make a good faith effort to explore with utility scale battery storage, you know, those types of systems. So if we can get one, we'll, we'll install it.
And Barry, is that reasonable from your standpoint?
Yeah, uh, sure. I believe Larry.
Okay.
And by the way, Larry, what is correct, uh, he's about, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ray.
Wait, no, no, I just, I, I think I'm hearing agreement. And what I'm hearing from Larry is by all means, they'll use it unless they can't find it commercially available, or it's going to cost more than the whole project in and of itself.
They may have to go to a other company other than Kid, um, which is I'm not, it's not a criticism, Larry. They may have to go to a different uh, fire suppression vendor because they, all vendors don't sell They may have to go to a different uh fire suppression vendor because they, all vendors don't sell all solutions. But he'll find it, it's available. As for cost, I can't, I don't wanna speak for cost. I'm, I'm not in that business. I don't have, I don't have an iron in the fire. I just would like to use a twenty-first century solution, not a nineteen-sixties solution.
Understood. I, but I think I heard, you're not Larry, you're Larry, you're not tied to the particular vendor, is that true?
Correct.
Okay, so I think you both said the same thing.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Maybe the vendor he's looking or using right now doesn't, but they should be looking at alternatives that do. And if they find the alternative that does it and it's, and is economically feasible, we're in violent agreement.
Yes, we got it.
That's okay, that's, thank you. That's all I needed to understand. That's reasonable, that makes sense. That's all I was trying to get. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I now feel comfortable. And I think the two issues we talked about have been resolved. From my standpoint, and it's written in the conditions, in it, as an appropriate way as humanly possible. I mean, what I'm hearing Larry say, they can't give us an ironclad guarantee. I don't think that's unreasonable. I'm hearing Barry say, there are alternatives and we really should be exhausting all possible avenues to use those alternatives. And I agree with that. Beyond that, I'm not.
We're in agreement, I think.
Okay, so I don't think beyond that, there's anything else the board could do. Other than then we're putting in the appropriate language to get to the place we wanna be.
As far as I'm concerned, yeah, I, I, I heard the same thing from, from Larry. Uh, I, it's just, we try to do something good, and Larry is correct. His non-existent, uh, non-working fire hydrant is approximately point five-ish. Give or take some feet, miles from the uh, the uh closest water main.
Right. So Kristen, let me ask you a question. Okay, I'm just trying to anticipate. Three months from now. Larry comes back and says, we can't find one. What do we do? I'm assuming they just can't go ahead. We probably would have to. Is there, is there a, a, a? Does the town have an avenue to say, let's talk about this before they just proceed? So we don't end up with a system that Barry says, why'd you do that? I think you could've done better.
Yeah, so that gets into the condition writing. So when you're talking about, you know, how. How many companies are you reaching out to, to, you know, exhaust that effort? You know, at what point is it uneconomic? Um, so those are kind of the details. And I think any condition that is um. Detailed is more helpful for us when we're, you know, doing. Um, zoning compliance for permits and making sure that the permits comply before getting a building permit and so forth. Um, so the more detailed you can be, the better. Um, if this is the type of, you know, sometimes there are conditions that the board puts in that are kind of. You know, if you can do this, that would be great. Try to work on, you know, X, Y, and Z. Um, and. So it, it kind of depends. Um, you know, if you want to ask him to. Reach out to at least a certain amount of companies and show us that, you know, that you can't come, can't purchase this.
If I, I think what I'm hearing, I just wanna make sure, what I'm hearing the only out. Is if it's not economically viable. At that point, I think we can have a discussion whether or not we agree or not if it's economically viable.
Well, I think Larry, there was some additional language about actual fire suppression capacity, right? I mean, that it was effective and what it was supposed to do, and also economically reasonable. That's right.
Code compliant and economically reasonable.
I just wanna, but in good faith, I don't, I don't, I don't hear them saying, well, we're gonna go out and talk to one vendor and just, just keep doing what we're gonna do. So I don't, I don't, I, I don't hear that. I mean, I, I'm taking your word, Larry, and Barry's saying. And it sounds like, you know, Barry's saying, hey, you know, I, I philosophically, I agree with what Barry's saying. I also wanna make sure that, and I'm hearing him saying, it, this is not like we're asking for you guys to do the impossible. There are systems out there. We want you to do more investigation of those other systems.
Yeah, I, I agree.
As long as it doesn't come at some exorbitant economic price that makes the project not viable.
Right.
Okay, then, I thank, I don't wanna go any further. You've helped me, you've answered my questions to my satisfaction, and thank you, Kristen, as well. Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to dominate so much time, but I wanna make sure, wanted to get some clarity on it. So that at least as a layman, I understand, so when I'm voting, I know what I'm voting for and, and, and we don't get a gotcha later, that's all. Uh, Larry, Larry, do you have? Has the issue with the trees been settled? How many trees you're planting and things like that?
Yeah, um, it's, it's covered in the decision, and there was a condition that obligates. Uh, St. Carfer to fund a tree planting plan over a period of five years for fifty thousand dollars.
And has it been agreed on?
Uh, I believe it has, you know.
It, it, it's in, it's in the draft decision.
Yes.
May I? Sorry.
Who's that? Nate?
This is Nate, yeah. Can I ask staff a follow-up question? Were you guys in touch with the fire chief about this agreement?
Yes, we, we spoke with Chief Hart this morning. And, you know, his initial concern was about the battery array, um, and having water access. Um, to the site, and so that's why he made those initial comments. Um, basically, the, the description of the communication that Larry had with the fire chief is accurate. Um, when I spoke to Chief Hart this morning. And I think um Chief Hart would be, you know, when, when Larry made that offer of the, the kind of donation in lieu. Of um that funding he's looking at would be for him to be able to purchase equipment. Or training, like Larry said, to address a fire if it ever happened or an incident at that site. Um, and so that's, you know, what he's looking at now, and he was agreeable to that.
And, and just one thing, that it's not specific to our site. He can, the training and equipment can be used on any solar facility in the town of Acton.
Any, any solar facility, so I, I think.
Or any purpose, right, Larry? I think it was unrestricted, yeah.
And I, and I think it was that we would, you know, where we, we proposed a draft condition that um ties it to. You know, this particular type of special permit because of the connection, the, the reason why he was making that requirement. So that the money would be used for a, a, a purpose that would have connection to it.
I, I wanna concur as a board member. I don't want it to go to some slush fund that can be used for all things. I think it needs to be tied. Like I say, it's a solar facility. The, the fire chief will spend the money to address any concerns he has because he doesn't have a hydrant. So he's gonna look for, you know, so if something does happen, he'll have money and or training to deal with it because they don't have a hydrant, so I. Uh, thank you, Kristen. I think it's critically that it'd be tied to this kind of facility and or solar, not that he can just go off and use it any way he wants to.
And I don't, I don't think that's his intention.
No, I understand, but I, I think that was a good clarification, and I thank Nate for asking the question. Kristen, do we need that in writing?
Um, I believe Chief Hart did actually send an email, um, and. Uh, I don't, I don't think you need it in writing unless you want it in writing. Um, he sent an email and I'm not sure Robert, if we're able to, did you pull it, pull it up? Yeah, I think Robert put it up on DocuShare already. Um, so Chief Hart sent an email to us, kind of. Um, a forward of an email that he sent to Larry, um, which. Acknowledged the conversation that they had when Larry made the offer of the forty thousand dollars for the donation and all of that connection.
It's in the members. As far as I'm concerned, there's a pretty exhaustive paper trail on it. And, and then if you embed it in the decision with, as a requirement, then, you know, it's memorialized.
Comments from any other board member? No? So we hear comments from, oops, go ahead, Sam.
Um, just a comment. Uh, Larry, I was hoping. That you, you guys will come back with a slightly higher love for the tree planting. Than the fifty K. That would have really made me feel really good. But I, I can also understand where you guys are coming from.
Mr. Chair? Are we at a point where we can make a motion and vote on this application? Get public comments first? I, that's probably a good point, yes. It's getting late, guys, so I, I wanna make sure that we kinda move along, that's all. Ye- yes, Mr. Chairman, noted in yes.
Yeah, we just have, Mr. Chairman, we just have one person. Uh, caller, I use a two, has a ha- has his or her hand raised.
Use a two, you're on.
Hi, this is Sarah from West Acton. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so um I agree with Ray and Nate. Uh, I would like to see the money tied to the site. Um, because um it sounds like a payoff otherwise, as opposed to a site specific to make it safer. And so I would, I know that his intent is good, um, but we have seen things like this on our towns where contributions like this were used for popcorn, latte machines, et cetera. Um, I, um, I love the fact that there is a tree cleaning program, however. Fifty thousand dollars is about like two hundred and fifty trees. And um the, just one acre is thirty, um, excuse me, one acre is like hundred trees. And thirty acres would be three thousand trees. So I feel like the fifty thousand is really considering millions of dollars. Are to be made with this site, that I feel like, um, if we're going to allow it and with no deed restriction after this is done. That I feel like, um, there's gotta be a lot more planting. Um, I feel like the power to denigrate is in your hands. Um, I urge you to wait up to denigrate or continue the hearing to get the money. So I mean, the uh vendor sorted out uh for a safe um approach, um, and uh give these trees another month to live. Uh, this is uh, uh, three thousand trees, folks. Um, I feel like they can afford it. They consider this property to be a financial asset, as they've said many times in other hearings. And so I feel like we have to treat ourselves um as if we're valuable. And that the biodiversity is valuable, and that to urge, uh, you know, three or four times as much. Money for replanting of trees or a deed restriction on this or both, frankly. Thank you.
No one else? Robert?
I blew that sub everybody from now.
Okay. What does the board wanna do? Continue or? I, 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 I think there's no really merit or benefit to continuing at this point, in my, in my opinion. Um, I think it's been aired, there's been a lot of back and forth. I think the critical issues have been addressed. Um, and if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. That we approve this application as amended with the conditions as we discussed tonight.
I would second that.
Okay.
You wanna review the, the draft decision? Cause it has a few, pick, pick what you wanna do. There's a few, few different options. If anything, you might straightforward.
Does the draft decision have all the stuff that we've talked about tonight or not?
The one online has a few options. Pick, you pick this condition or this condition. They're very similar, but one is the applicant and one is from the town. Just word a little differently.
Um, I, 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 I'm, I'm, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, my preference would be we pick whatever the town wrote. As opposed to the applicant. Just as good form, because I think it, otherwise it opens us up saying, well, the applicant wrote the condition. And we should've done the town unless there's a fundamentally material.
I would recommend going, going for one of my ways. Not that, it won't be that complex, but just. Just, just, maybe a little different, and you might pick one.
And I think um you, you could just, you wanna pull it up on the screen? Would that be helpful to take a quick look at?
Yeah.
And also, um. Just to also note that the additional conditions that Larry verbally stated. He did submit them in writing. Um, in response to um the uh fire suppression agent that Barry was talking about. So you could also, you know, vote to include that as a condition, um, if you, if you wanted to.
My vantage point, I just wanna make sure the conditions we discussed tonight are incorporated and we didn't miss something, that's all. So if there's ones in here that it's one or the other, then yes, let's go through them so. We as a board understand what the, what we're voting on as far as the conditions are concerned.
So this is, this contributing to the findings, this is just a finding of what the fire chief recommended. And this is a finding of, of the, in lieu of setting the water line, the applicant offers. Forty thousand dollar payment for that, what, acting fire department for fire is the equipment that will help to mitigate any potential. Incident at the solar facility. And then jumping down to the waivers, the board needs to make waivers, uh, findings. To grant waivers for the uh floor and elevation plans, and then also for the sidewalk, so. Just keep in mind those waivers are needed. And then for the conditions, this is the finding about the uh forty thousand dollar payment to the acting fire department for fire CT equipment. That help mitigate the any potential incidents. And then this is.
The one that, that ties the forty thousand dollar payment.
Correct.
It's here in writing, is what you're saying.
Correct. This is, yeah, this is in writing, yep. And then here is the suggestion that uh Larry can discuss. Uh, that he proposed, um, in his, in his uh description over the weekend on the ninth. And then here is, this is where it gets a little um fuzzy. You, we have. One suggestion, the town's suggestion, um, from last meeting, and then we have one that. Uh, Larry has provided last meeting, but then he added the last sentence. So it's ready for the, uh, board to decide which one to go for.
Robert, before you move on there, I just wanna make sure. I see the, the town's suggestions comment. Then three point three point one zero. Um, there was an additional comment that the applicant added, he's not substituting for.
No, he's correct.
Adds further clarification, so it's not a picking between the town and or the applicant. They just added a sentence that gives more clarification.
Uh, three point, yeah, three, three point, three point ten was written uh by, by Larry and the, as the applicant. Um, and, and this is. And that, there's one, it's a little more detailed than, than three point three point nine, so. I don't think we have an issue with uh, with the, with the, the board going with the, with the applicants.
Robert, who was trying to talk? I couldn't identify him.
I, I don't know.
I, I, I thought I heard someone in the background. Was that Larry?
Um, I, I did speak out of turn saying that exactly what Ray was saying is that. Last sentence in bright red is intended to be additive, not in pu- in lieu.
And on three point three point one one, I'm trying to keep focused, this is the first place, one or the other. Right, Robert? You're saying the town's comment was, or the applicant's is, the applicant shall make payments. Da, 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 and you're saying the town's comment is, you're suggesting that paragraph instead of the other one. In this case, it's two different paragraphs.
I, I think Ray, the um, the first opt, so going back to section three point three point nine.
Okay.
So I think what, 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 what the option is, is three point three point nine or three point three point ten. So three point three point ten is much more detailed than the town's original suggestion. So the, so, so those are, that's the first this or that type of option.
Thank you so much. Okay. We might wanna talk as board, I personally prefer three point three point ten to three point three point nine.
Well, can, may I ask a question about these as well? Is three point three point nine left intentionally vague so the fire chief and fire department can determine what's going into this emergency response plan? Three point three point ten seems a little more descriptive and prescriptive. You might think that those are the only things that need to go into an emergency response plan. But the fire chief might have different ideas.
Well, I think the way it's written, it's saying it shall include, it doesn't prohibit other things from being included. So I think the intent here is to make sure that those specific aspects are addressed in the plan and not left out. Um, so I think that, to me, that, I think, you know, if I were to. Um, review this, making sure that they complied with everything before getting their permit, their first building permit. Um, that's what I would be looking for.
I, I, I mean, Nate, I. I I, I mean Nate, I, this is a case where I feel much more comfortable with three point three point one zero. It's not overly prescriptive, it's, but it is kinda saying who needs to be involved in the discussion, and that's much more specific.
And and also significantly, if I may add, we added the word satisfactory emergency response plan.
Right.
So that, you know, we've got a satisfi- uh the ultimate arbitrator, whether it's satisfactory or not, is the fire chief. He's the expert, so we thought if we had that language in there, then we would be holding to the town to approve the plan prior to uh.
Chris, I have a question for you. Should we, or Mister Chairman, should we now stop and actually poll the board as to which paragraph we wanna include or exclude?
Sure, uh however you wanna work it, up to you guys.
Mister Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we strike what is currently three point three point nine and substitute three point three point ten becomes three point three point nine. Back then the motion. John, you look confused.
I'm just double checking, why is the?
Well, Kristen just said, Kristen clarified, she said, wait a minute, timeout. Paragraphs is meant to be one or the other, not both.
Right, sorry, my question is, why is that last sentence in red if the whole thing is not?
There was further, there was further clarification from the applicant, so.
Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right.
That's what, so it got amended a little further, so I thought, I thought that was all the one. Kristen clarified that three point three point nine was kinda like the original one. They came over the three point three point ten and the applicant added the last sentence. Created in three point three point ten, so I'm looking at this saying, and my motion is, okay, let's right now tell the the staff to qu- to strike out three point three point nine is currently constituted, which by definition means three point three point ten becomes three point three point nine.
Gotcha.
We can work with the numbering too, so if you wanna talk about the substance, you know, we can all, we can renumber.
So, so we have a motion, Mister Chairman, do we want further discussion, or are we ready for a roll call on that?
Well, I I'll second what Ray said just um submitted and said. Perhaps someone already seconded it, maybe I, maybe I didn't hear.
We, we are voting on three point three point ten as a substitute for three point three point nine, correct?
Right, correct. Okay, should, do the roll call now?
Yes.
Okay, Sam.
Hi.
Nate?
Yes.
Derek?
Eric Wiltz, yes.
Ray?
Yes.
And myself, John, votes yes as well.
That has taken place. Can, would Derek, come here, so we don't get ahead of ourselves, if I can I ask Kristen or Bob to give us the next either or choice, so I'm not misinterpreting?
Three point, three point eleven.
Right, and and it's it's up to you, you know, as how you want to um, you know, work through the decision. Um I don't believe you'd need to take a roll call vote every time, you know, you look um at making suggested changes and come to consensus. Um but the important vote would be at the end, either, you know, approve or or deny.
Okay, thanks, Kristen.
Robert, where are we looking at now?
Three point three point eleven, so you have two options.
Okay, so the first, this is one, if I'm reading this correctly, the first one was a comment or the applicant's suggestion about this condition. The second one is the town's suggestion for the condition.
Maybe if I could just explain why we made the suggestion. And um we we deal with a lot of mitigation issues when we go through any permit process. What I've learned over the years is the best thing we can do with funds is to, is to give it to the town and say, okay, this is our contribution to the town, and you you may do with it as you please. If you wanna donate that money to a nonprofit organization that plants trees, that's fine. If you wanna go out and buy trees and plant them yourself, i- it gives you the most flexibility. Um the concern that we had on the original draft is it seems a little bit ambiguous and you you know, if we need to contribute a hundred trees, well, you know, a tree by definition could be just um something six inches tall, and uh we could buy those for fifty cents a piece. And uh you know, we tried to make it as airtight as we can, and they make it airtight by giving it to the town and saying, here's fifty thousand dollars. Spend the money to the best of your ability to compensate for trees.
I mean, I. Why we should be so bold, the 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 principal difference between the two is one mentions fifty thousand dollars and one doesn't. That's it. Other than that, quite candidly, one says it's gonna be fifty thousand dollars, the other one just says it's gonna be planned, da da da, and there's no mention of money.
And and importantly, it's it's your fifty thousand dollars, not ours.
Right, and is 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 that fair, Kristen?
Um so the reason that we wrote it in this way was because we were originally contemplating having potentially an an MOU or memorandum of understanding, um potentially outside of this decision with the town and the applicant. Um and that would be something that would be brought forward to the Board of Selectmen. Um we did not have time to kinda move that forward um at that moment, and so we drafted this condition in this way, so that um that process could kind of occur outside of this decision. Um but require that process to happen, and to kind of give some parameters of the hundred trees um or monetary contribution, so that our thought process was that that could be detailed in a a plan that would be worked on with the applicant and the Board of Selectmen.
Let me ask you a slightly different question. Do you have an objection or a problem with what the applicant submitted, and would it, would it help mitigate or with that process on faster?
Um, you know, I think it's up to the board, I I think the, you know, the thought process was, I think really is, is fifty thousand dollars adequate, um if the board feels like it is, that's, that's one thing. Um if they feel like a hundred trees is um, you know, feels like it's, it's more um um compatible with the loss of trees that, you know, is being proposed for the, the proposed facility. Um you could look at it that way too, so I don't wanna um.
Okay, Sam? I think Sam had a, I did a comment on this. Right, Sam, could you weigh in?
Yes, I I definitely would uh support the fifty thousand at least, as opposed to the hundred trees. I think, I mean, I'm not an expert, but I think we can do better than a hundred trees with fifty thousand dollars.
So, Sam, um I could interject, I I've been bothered ever since you made the comment that you wanted more than fifty thousand dollars, and um I I think if we can resolve this issue tonight, then I, we'd like to offer sixty, you know, uh uh increase the ante sixty thousand dollars, it's our best effort. Uh it, the board has forced us to move to that, I can assure you that sixty thousand dollars in the right hands uh can plant a lot of trees, and 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 just as an aside, you're much better planting small trees because they adapt to the environment, you know, if you, if you go out and buy a bunch of specimen trees and and transplant them, they're more susceptible to dying, so we've had better luck with small trees, you know, you get the the one inch whips, and uh they have really great survival rates, plus you're, you're building for the future, and if another ten thousand dollars makes people feel more comfortable, we're happy to do that.
Yeah, a- any extra amount helps, definitely, thank you.
Okay, okay, Mister Chairman, I don't feel like, I don't wanna dominate, based on what I just heard, we take the first paragraph, change the fifty to sixty. And and that's, that's what we want, because I wouldn't hearing, I agree with Sam, I hear I'd rather have a a defined amount of money and not constrain it to a hundred trees, but it's a defined amount of money. I think the critical thing that Larry's and I do agree, in the right hands.
Yeah, but that's, that's a generic issue.
Like, oh, we might get less, but and and to Larry's point, and I think anybody else's it's not just planting any trees, it's the right kind of trees and the right mix of trees, and it could be much more, so.
Yep.
That's what I would go there, at this point, we can vote on it later. I I think we should take paragraph one, make the fifty sixty. It's not in, it's not in contradiction to what the 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 staff put in originally, so it's not like um diametric opposite or totally inconsistent with what the um staff suggested, it just adds some more clarity. And we have an amount very specifically mentioned in there.
And uh Mister Chair, there was one other piece of concern that we had um with that uh the way that the condition was written, and um it's, it's the tracking of the funds. So this being in a condition, in a decision, um it's not in, you know, another like memorandum of understanding that's in um someone else's hands, so it's it's not being tracked like in the finance department or something, it's, it's just a condition in this decision, so I think it would be helpful if there's um some language in there that somehow memorialize it, memorializes a um a payment plan of some sort. I don't know what that would look like, um because I haven't had a a chance to kind of look into other options. Um but I think, you know, if you were inclined to adopt that decision and kind of give us a little bit of leeway in modifying it, um so that we can make sure that we feel comfortable that we can track it into the future.
But you, you're saying that uh we needed a more defined mechanism for sixty thousand dollars to be paid to the town of Acton, and how to track it?
Yeah, well, the way we typically track things are, you know, prior to endorsement of a plan, prior to issuance of a building permit or prior to issuance of an occupancy permit, in this particular case, these payments would occur after all of those um trigger points are out of our hands, really, so um you know, it's not like we would be seeing a permit for reviewing and we'd say, oh, wait you guys, you know, can't sign this until you do that, um so in this case, it it would just be nice if I could have some type of payment plan memorialized, um but again, I don't know exactly what that would look like, but I think it would help us to make sure that we're staying on top of um the payments as well as the applicant, um I'm not sure if the applicant has any, or if Larry has any suggestions on maybe what you've done in the past with other towns.
Listen, didn't, didn't I see somewhere before, that they had proposed making the payment X years after the project reached a certain stage?
Exactly.
Was five years. Right, yeah, there is a five, there is, I I I think, uh uh again, this is one, it's a detail that Kristen what I'm hearing is that the staff would feel a little more comfortable if we just added some details to that, so they've kinda said after five years. Kristen's saying, give them some latitude to add some milestones at year five, what happens?
There are some type of agreement outside of this decision that could kind of memorialize that, I think would be, would be helpful. Um and and I, you know, I, I think that we could work on that um and bring something back to the board, I know seems like you're looking to move through this tonight, um but.
Larry, can we make our installment?
What I, what I'm hearing Kristen say is, we can certainly vote on this tonight and say that we're not giving final approval until they come back with a final, we're looking at the draft decision, we're gonna give them direction. Rather than giving them discretion to release the final decision, that we wanna come back to us to vote on the final, once they've incorporated that. That's what I'm hearing, so I think we just close this, saying, subject to these, these three changes go ahead and, you know, make changes and bring back a final to us that we would vote on. I think that's what I mean.
Are we, are we, are we delaying this thing yet one more time for these small?
No, I would say we would close the public hearing, we would vote essentially on approving the plan. But we're saying as a board, we don't want to release it until we see the final final. So I I would, A, I would, I would recommend we close the public hearing. We take that vote saying, okay, because we've talked about a lot of stuff. We see the draft, we vote in principle to approve the application, and that's what I would vote on. But we're not gonna release the final decision until we actually see it, we're not gonna take, it's not Kristen's, we're we're not, on some decisions, we delegate to staff to go ahead and kind of incorporate what we do and go ahead and release the plan. What we're saying, what I'm saying, we close the hearing, we vote on the plan, but before we release it, we wanna see the final, and we would make sure, okay. And then we go through and say, here's all the things, and then they will release the, we would vote on the final plan. So I don't wanna continue the hearing personally, but this is.
That, that, Ray, that works for me, but yeah, you know, if if it's okay with the Kristen.
That works for us.
Or, yeah, but Ray, if I could understand, I think the only place, the only sticking point that I identify so far is just the the carbon mitigation paragraph and the method of payment.
Yeah, I I, uh 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 from, from my standpoint, and Mister Chair, if it's okay, from my standpoint, all I'm saying is Kristen has identified some language, that, I I think fundamentally I'm saying yes. But until I see it in writing, I don't feel comfortable saying, okay, just go and do it. But from your standpoint, um we're not gonna continue the public hearing. If if we voted now, we would say, I would vote that we're gonna approve this, subject to a final a a, the final dec- decision being presented to the board, so we can vote on the final language. Not vote on the final language we think is gonna be there, and let staff just go off and do it. And then a month from now, have someone on the board say, wait a minute, that's not what I thought we talked about. So it's just a, uh it's dotting our i's and crossing our t's from my perspective. Um so we would, we would actually move, presumably, right, if we got to this I would want us to vote on approval or denial, here tonight, that's my personal feeling. And then saying, yep, but we wanna see the final decision before it's released, to take a final vote on the final decision itself.
Mister Chairman, may I ask one clarifying suggestion? Uh thank you, I I I think on this item of three point three eleven, I think we have uh what I understand, a a plan of sixty thousand dollar contribution. We propose ten equal installments of six thousand dollars per year, and and that seems like a and that equals sixty thousand dollars, and so, and that happens beginning on the fifth anniversary of the commercial operation date uh of the facility, and so to us, that's a very uh clear uh performance standard. Can that not be the basis for approval?
So uh Mister Chair, that that is completely clear, I think, you know, in our operations is what I'm thinking of. Um so there's nothing, if Robert and I are gone tomorrow this decision is, is a decision that's filed, and there's no trigger that someone is going to come in and say, oh, it's another year since this permit that I didn't even know existed was permitted, and I need to make sure that we got their check. Um and so that's kind of what I'm, what we're looking for, and you know, there's one suggestion that, that I might be able to make tonight. Um you know, looking at this, we could kind of combine the two, um the first paragraph and the second. Um kind of keeping our language of requiring the applicant to submit a detailed plan to mitigate the loss of trees and to um include the details that you're stating about, you know, beginning on the fifth anniversary, that so the plan will include these items, and so that could be, it, we could work it out that way. But I just wanna make sure that the requirement is that you're submitting a detailed plan, and these are the aspects of the plan. And so that, we will, do you know what I mean?
What you're saying is the paragraphs are not substitutes, they're additive.
We, we can, I I can kind of merge the two, but I wanna, I just wanna make sure that the town has a basically a plan, that there, there's something else tracking the required payments.
Okay, and I think saying prior to final billing, for the applicant to read a final detailed plan, the final detailed plan would have that in it.
Exactly.
But my understanding of that detailed plan is that on the fifth anniversary, the owner writes a check for six thousand dollars to the town of Acton. It does it again the next year and the year after that, and the year after that, it's the town that makes the decision on, on the plan and the planting plan, so to speak.
So we really look for like a, like a binding, like type of, some type of memorandum of understanding that you would that go into the town outside of this decision. So it'll be the same thing, but just, that's what I think.
I think we're in violent approval, in violent agreement on, okay, I think you're both saying the same thing. You're saying you're gonna kind of chat for ten thousand in six years, Kristen's basically saying that will get written into the final plan. You're saying you're going to kind of chat for ten thousand in six years, Chris is basically saying that will get written into the final plans. So it'll be a specific in case Robert and Kristen are here. Make sure that all the people understand, it's the, after five years after the solar array. Has been in uh, is working. Is that my understanding?
That's right, that's, that's the meaning of commercial operation date, that's right.
And I'm do, and I'm just double checking that it's six thousand a year times ten years.
That's correct.
All right, it's ten thousand, six years.
No, no, six thousand times ten years.
I heard six thousand, ten years.
That's right.
Right, that, that comes in sixty thousand dollars.
Right, no, but someone, someone just said six, ten thousand for six years, that's not right.
Yes, yes, you're right, the way, the way it's written, you're correct, he says fifteenth anniversary, you're right, it, it's. Six thousand dollars a year for ten years.
Ten years, okay, got it.
And, and just one bio suggestion, at least on my part, is could we. Add a sentence in, in an effort to move forward, just to say, uh at the end of the first paragraph. That um the applicant will. Uh execute a letter of understanding or, or a memorandum of understanding uh acceptable to the board. Uh prior to pulling the building permit or something like that, that I, I, I sympathetic to Kristen that who remembers this in five years without a. A letter of intent or a memorandum of understanding, but if, if we blended that into the condition, then we could forget about it at least for tonight. And we'd have to execute that prior to pulling a building permit.
That's exactly what we're looking for, Larry, so that when we put detailed plan in there, that's what we're kind of leaving it open ended, so that it could be an MOU or it could be. You know, some other form of agreement, um but that's exactly what, yeah, what we're suggesting here.
Then why don't we just be explicit in this condition and say, subject to a. Um a memorandum of understanding or other equally acceptable agreement. We, we can words move a little bit, when it's not uh late in the evening.
Oh, I think I hear that Kristen and Robert has enough information to merge. Three point three point eleven, both paragraphs, and that Larry will. Submit memorandum of understanding or equivalent.
We're, we're getting, we're going to incorporate that a memorandum, a let, a memorandum of, of, part of the condition will be. The submission or the completion of a memorandum of agreement. We're just saying it's not going to be done now, but that's a condition, it will be done.
And, and you know, to give it some teeth, say prior to uh issuance of a building permit. And then you have all the leverage.
Okay, good, Kristen, that's okay?
Yep, that's exactly what we're looking for.
Okay, hey, anything else?
The only other thing was the uh description that Larry brought up today and. Do you want that paragraph into the decision?
It's the bold uh tag font that you see in the middle of the screen.
Well, the only thing I recognize is HFC free, which is good.
Yep.
And we all know what HFC stands for.
I, I, I certainly think, given our discussion tonight, that paragraph should be incorporated into the decision.
I agree with that. Definitely, definitely put that bold blue in there.
Do we have anything else, Robert?
You got that.
Mister Chairman, is it okay if I made a motion? Go ahead, I would like to make a motion that.
Can you, can you clo, can you first close the hearing?
Uh Mister Chairman, that's your job.
You need to vote on that.
Yeah, turn the motion second to, to close the hearing, have a roll call.
I make, I make a motion that we close the public hearing on the Fifty Independence Road. Special permit application for the ground manner industrial soul, vote to for lack installation.
I can do it.
Yep.
John, go ahead and make, and vote on it.
I sure will. John, I'll go first this time, I would vote yes to close the public hearing, yes, Nate?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Ray?
I.
Derek?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And now we can proceed with the next one.
Now you can, now you can vote on it, now you can vote into the decision if you like. You, you just made a big motion.
Can I make a motion then to? Given all the discussion we've had and all the things we've added and discussed and put in, that the motion would be to accept. And grant the Fifty Independence Road. After what we've just talked about, including all the things we just talked about.
It's been seconded.
Okay. So having heard the second, um we can vote on that now then. Nate?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
John says yes, and Ray?
Vote aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we will get that decision now, as soon as the next few days. Thank you, Larry.
Yeah, let me, let me just, we really appreciate all your time and effort and. Um wha- what I've learned over the years is we do our best job to file a good application. But these processes work pretty well, and I think, I think our proposal is stronger today than what we originally submitted. Your, your decision helps us achieve that, so um you make a pretty good design team. And, and we appreciate all your time, thank you.
Thank you, both of you.
I also wanted to thank you and, and for all of your diligence, and I wanted also to let you know that uh on this coming Friday, we'll have our second meeting. Uh with the town manager uh and other staff of the town regarding the low income community solar benefits. Uh for town residents who are part of, who are low income residents, who are part of the municipal energy aggregation program of Acton, so. These are all good things to come, uh but the first thing is to have a special permit, so we really, really appreciate your efforts. And uh we'll look forward to a good project, many, many thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, Kristen, when do you think we'll see that uh? What uh change in the, in the writing, in the text?
Probably by next week.
That early, that's good.
So Robert, what do you think?
Probably as soon as possible.
Yeah, the, the, I can just, I don't want to be clear, so you'll make the changes and issue the decision, we're not voting on, on the. Final dra, the final, correct?
Correct, as, as long as you direct us in that way, we'll, we'll, we'll really do it, we'll sign it.
Given that Nate's relatively new, I want him to understand where we are and what we just did, and now he's, I thought we were going to vote again. What we voted tonight was, we had enough discussion that we're trusting staff to incorporate the comments as directed. And to act on the ba, the board's behalf to issue the decision.
Yep, that, that's clear, thank you for that, um I haven't been on here very long, but. Uh I have noticed the staff is exceptionally detail oriented and I have a lot of trust and faith in them.
It, we have a very good staff.
Sure do.
Okay, Derek, I, I do want to, I, I, I feel compelled to mention the time. No, I'm, I'm serious, it's, it's, it is ten fifteen. Do we anticipate going another hour, hour and a half tonight? I don't think that makes sense, and I know we have another public hearing, but it is getting late. So I think we should.
Suggest that we continue T C R C?
I think we need to apologize to the applicant and actually discuss a continuance because it's late. And I don't think it's fair to the applicant, I don't think for the, it's fair to the people attending, I don't think it's fair to us as board members, because we're kind of tired now.
Well, we can't think straight.
Right, well, not, we can think straight, but we are tired, it's an important application, there's been a lot of input, a lot of. And I don't want to kind of say, oh, I'm tired, let's just rush through it, that's kind of where I'm coming from.
I see two new, we had names.
Yeah, we can do, we're going to continue, so obviously.
Mark Bobowski.
Good evening, Mister Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'm not tired at all, we'd like to wrap this up this evening, so we, we believe we're very close to the board being able to reach a decision. And uh I'm used to Franklin back in the late nineteen eighties when midnight curfew was sometimes called.
I'll defer to the rest of the board, I just, I, I am very tired at this point, that's all I'm saying.
I'll weigh in and say I would say I'm equally as tired, and I hate, I'm not trying to. Yeah, I'm just trying to be as honest as I can.
Well, not very.
So I, yes, I'm, 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 especially since I just recovered from the vaccine. However, I feel just dragging it out is not fair for the applicants.
I will acknowledge that, I, 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 I have mixed feelings, I agree, and I. Mark, I, I hear you, I'm not dissuaded with you, I just, I just want to make sure we're all collectively fair and, and are doing the right thing, that's all.
Nate? Uh, I guess I'm lucky in that I don't vote on this one, so I might sign off early.
Isn't that convenient?
Kristen, what, does, what do we need, is it just a majority vote? Or super majority?
So you need four, so you have the four, um like Nathan mentioned, he's not eligible to vote on this application, so. Um Ray, Derek, John, and Sam, you are the four.
Maybe what we should do is take a five minute break, does that make sense?
Well, it would certainly allow me to look at my calendar, which is upstairs, so yes.
Yeah, and I could use a, a, a bathroom break, if that's okay?
I'll take five.
Take five, okay, thank you.
Okay, you take five.
I am going to sign off, if that's all right with you guys.
Nate, thanks for staying so late.
Yes, thanks guys, have a good night, I'll see you next week.
Okay, thank you. Hey, what is that, ten years ago?
I'm ready to go.
I'm back if you want.
Where I don't know, but I'm ready to go. Sorry, I'm getting punchy.
It's okay, Grandpa.
Ready for that.
A three-tongue grandpa to you.
That's right.
That's awesome.
Can, can, can I ask Seth a question?
I'm right here for you.
Just, Seth, what year did you graduate from AB?
Uh nineteen ninety-six.
Okay, thank you. So I think we're just waiting on Derek, is that it? So I think we're just waiting on Derek, is that it?
Right.
Hey Robert? You want to give Derek a call? In case he got lost, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
Maybe just use the cell phone in case the people are sleeping.
I'm looking for his cellphone.
Yeah, I'm just.
I don't have a cellphone, I just have the horn.
All right, let me see if I can pull it.
Come on Derek. Come on, this is not good, come on, come on. Have everyone here? Okay. Next item on the agenda is PB twenty-seven, Continued Public Hearing, Land Conservation Residential Community, Special Permit, twenty-two Elm Street. Okay. Uh, John, competitive, will you take the roll call that everyone is, who's here is supposed to be here?
Yes, I'm, I'm just double checking, are we continuing, or, or is the roll call to, to decide what's happening next?
Roll call is to make sure that we, even though we took a break, I want to make sure we have everyone present that needs to be here. Does that make sense?
I, yes, the words do, I, so we are, we're continuing with twenty-two Elm Street, if, if we're all here?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Derek is here, sorry, Derek?
Derek is present.
Ray?
Present.
Myself is present, John and Sam?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Hey? Who are we supposed to make this presentation? Is it me? Or is it, uh, Mark Bobowski? Kristen?
Um, I think Mr. Chair might want to, um, if you're going to open up the Continued Public Hearing, it would be a good, um, time to do that, um, so the board can, um, you know, formally open the public hearing if you're, if you want to move forward with that tonight.
Okay, it's about ten thirty, thirty-two or thirty-three? Yeah, when Derek?
Yep.
Will we vote on that? I, I want to consider what I said before, I'm very concerned at this point. With all due respect to the applicant, I don't want the board opened up to whatever we decide, have citizens said they waited till late at night and they took a vote in the, in the, in the, in darkness. I just don't feel comfortable with us continuing this and making a vote tonight. I think it opens up the board to significant criticism from the public, if we voted a certain way, the, the, they'll get, I, I just, I, I feel strongly we should discuss that a little bit further, at least in my opinion. And not just kind of plow along, business as usual, and I do want to acknowledge, I agree with Sam, and I agree that we'd be putting the applicant, it's not fair, but it's not fair also to everybody who's been sitting here for, um, three hours now, on, on, on a fairly significant, high-profile filed decision. So. John?
Derek, um, Chairman, that's why I asked before I did the roll call, was the five-minute break was necessary, but I, I, I too was wondering if we were coming back after the five minutes to then decide, are we gonna then continue, or postpone, or delay? Um, I agree a hundred percent with Ray just said, with all due respect, I would rather wait, but I understand that we, there's four of us to vote now, but I will tell you that I think it's too important to start it up now, but that's just my opinion, and no.
I also want to acknowledge, the applicant has to agree, so we can't just decide this on our own.
Sorry, okay, sorry, you're right.
I mean, I, so I understand we'd be asking, uh, Mark and Seth.
Sorry.
Hey, I just wanted to give you the sense of where I'm coming from and why.
May I ask when your next scheduled meeting is?
Next week.
What, what day?
This one, Tuesday. Correct, we have a week, we have a meeting next week?
Correct.
Yeah, so the reason I'm mentioning it too, it's not like it's another month from now.
Yeah, do you have an early spot on the agenda? I have another meeting that night.
There's actually, um, on our administrative updates, one of my questions to the board was going to be if they were open to continuing the forty-seven, um, Conan subdivision proposal, which was, I think, first on the agenda. So, um, you know, I think the board just discussed, um, earlier tonight that they were continuing the, um, zoning public hearing to next week, um, to seven forty-five, uh, for them to make their formal vote, um, to either recommend or not recommend, so, um, you could do this right after that, um, you could take this, this item up.
What was that, that you say that we, did we commit to, uh, next week, something at seven forty-five already?
Um, for the Continued, uh, Zoning Public Hearing? You, um, continued that to next, uh, next week on the twentieth, so that you could vote your recommendation?
Was this the, uh, drive-up window, or?
Yes, yes, it's the drive-up window. Uh, if I could, I think we could manage our time. I, we had a fairly extensive discussion tonight on the drive-up window, but we wanted to, I think we can actually have our discussion and take our vote within fifteen minutes of that, and schedule a public hearing for this at eight o'clock, and make it a priority that we manage to it. So to answer your question, Mark, this would not be another, you're gonna come and sit for another three hours and have someone sit, we're gonna get to you. And so I, oh, Seth, I, just in fairness to you and everybody else, I really think that would be in the best interest of everybody.
But we hear you loud and clear, so we'll take that deal.
Thank you.
Eight o'clock, next week, Tuesday?
Thank you.
And, uh. I thank you, and I think.
You have to make a motion first?
This was not our intent, I want the, you know, it was not the board's intent, but I think it's, anyway, go ahead.
I've been doing this a long time, I get it, don't worry about me.
So can I make a?
Robert, you were gonna say something?
Sam has his hand up.
Yeah, and Robert was.
My, uh, my, my comment, Chairman, was what John would do, make a motion, continue public hearing, and move on.
We do that, I have a comment, just a question actually, let's make sure, are, are all four of us committing to be here next Tuesday? Because we lead all four of us, right?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Yes, so let's make sure that we are all there.
Yeah, thank you Sam, that's, yes.
And Kristen, this thing at seven forty-five, drive-up windows? How long do you think that we can make a decision in there?
It, I think, uh, Mr. Chair Ray said that he felt, Ray, I'll let you speak.
Yeah, Derek, I mean, we had a good discussion tonight. I think collectively, we kind of said we'd like to think about a few things, I don't think we need much more than ten or fifteen minutes.
I agree. I think that just.
I think we can manage to that, because it's not, it's a, it's a, it's a vote on a recommendation to the board, the select board, we're not making any final, final decisions, we might want to incorporate some suggestions that we heard tonight. I'll be prepared, at least from my standpoint, I'll, I'll be very quickly say, oh, here's what I heard last week, I think we should add A and B if we want to give the select board some further guidance, because the select board's gonna take whatever we do, and, you know, craft the final, um, warrant article anyway.
Well, in my, my mind, uh, the drive-up window discussion took too long. Would I, didn't want to be rude and shut some people off, we may have to do that sometimes, and take their brick bats, they're thrown our way.
Yes, but Derek, that's, that's all the one reason that it's mostly fleshed out by now.
Right, I agree, and, and, and we're not, this is not a town meeting vote on the final bylaws.
It's not a vote, it's a recommendation.
Hearing, we're gonna give our guidance basically saying we want to vote for it or not, and the board of selectmen could ignore us either way. So that's, I'm just trying to put it in context, so you as chair can definitely say, that's all we're gonna spend on it tonight.
Okay. Motion. We're all set, we'll meet next week at, uh, eight o'clock for?
Mr. Chair, we need to make a motion first, I make a motion, we continue the twenty-two Elm Street PCRC public hearing to eight o'clock on April the twentieth of twenty twenty-one.
Second.
We're voting it.
Okay, so we're gonna vote on that. Sam?
Yes.
John, myself says yes, Ray?
Yes.
And Derek?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all, stay safe, see you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you Mark and Seth.
Thank you Mark and Seth, thank you.
Thank you.